21 Regular Meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Will everyone please join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just want to say thank you everyone for showing up in the audience today. It's been quite some time since we've seen a group like this and it's, you know, no matter where your stance is, it's refreshing to have you here to be able to voice your opinions. Ms. Glanville, will you please report out on the last closed session?
May 27th, report of closed session. Item number one, public employment pursuant to government code section 54657B1, county administrative officer. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you, Ms. Glanville. We'll move to staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Do we have staff comments?
Yes, we do. Supervisor Stopper, good morning. Chair Stopper, respected board members. Deputy Clerk of the Board and Calaveras Community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. This past weekend, we had another successful rabies and microchip clinic here on our government center in campus. Our friends at Calaveras Animal Services Focus and our volunteer veterinarians Kathy and Steve Gatlin administered over 133 vaccines and 75 microchips. We also received over $504 in donations from our generous community. Thank you to our Calaveras community. Today, we have vaccinated 358 animals at our clinics and microchipped 204 animals of our communities' fur babies. We cannot thank Focus volunteers and Dr. Kathy and Steve Gatlin enough for always being there for animal services and those in our care. In May, our dog volunteers gave over 190 hours of their precious time to our four-legged pups, and Bolt, Sukie, and Chester were adopted by loving people. Our next free rabies and microchip clinic will be held in September as July and August are too hot for humans and their fur babies. Animal Services and Focus wish you a great summer, and we hope to see you soon in September at Spence Feed and Supply in Angels Camp for our next free clinic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Further staff comments or announcements?
I do not see any.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the public health update. Informational item, Public Health Services receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus.
Well, good morning. Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency, it's nice to see you, Chair Stopper, members of the board. This morning, the team and I will simply be providing you, let's get this started for you. As you can see, I'm not able to get it to slide the way I'm hoping, but you can still see the first slide as we go. I'm here today with Doug Archer, your CEO of Dignity Health, and Dr. Ramirez, your county health officer, to update you with the novel coronavirus COVID-19 update. As you can see, this is information you can access at any time at the Calaveras County website. We have conducted 44,026 tests to date. We have a confirmed number of 2,195 cases. Active today is seven, and CBPH reports two hospitalizations at this time. Vaccinations, we have administered 35,117. 2,132 individuals have recovered, and unfortunately, we have seen 56 deaths. Tier assignment was assigned yesterday at noon. That continues to remain in the orange or moderate tier. You can see the yellow is continuing to grow and the red is starting to drop. That is an optimistic sign. And as we all know, starting June 15th, the blueprint with the colored system will go away. But as of today and until that date, we continue to follow the guidelines under that moderate or orange tier. It's important to note, and I've done this each time now, is to look at the state versus the county metrics. The county is seeing 2.2 out of 100,000 new COVID cases, where the state is seeing 2.2 versus 3.9 per 100,000 here in Calaveras County. Our positivity rate also continues to trend higher at 3% versus .8 statewide. County comparisons, if we're looking just sort of to our neighbors here in Calaveras and in Toolumine, we're at the orange moderate level. Calaveras is currently sitting on seven active cases, and you can see the total case comparison across the board from Amador to Toolumine and Calaveras. So we're sort of in the middle. Amador has, as of this last reporting time, remained in the yellow as well with 11 active cases. So we want to talk about what's coming next. We have noted that on June 15th, all industries may return to usual operations. Of course, the expectation is common sense risk reduction measures, masking and vaccinations, continuing to do those two things along with hand washing and other common sense things will continue to help combat this issue. The state is holding that option to revisit the June 15th date if it's needed. The two criteria they will look at is an equitable vaccine availability for all Californians and consistently low burden of disease. Cal OSHA has a different set of timelines and standards that they're looking for for the workplace. So we do here in Calaveras County, we'll see at least county operations and intend to change the requirements of our current coronavirus 19 prevention plan. There's nothing in writing as of now, neither from Cal OSHA or from others. So as of now, there is no change to the mask requirements in public workplaces. Public facing offices cannot ensure 100% vaccinated interface, but all questions relating to the workplace will of course be referred to your human resources. We do have now a new mobile vaccination van. We have been talking about one that is dedicated to those that were homebound. This mobile vaccination plan is on loan to us from the state of California, and it is for anyone needing access at a mobile location. It will run Wednesdays through Sundays for the next 60 days. It is not only state funded, it is also state staffed, and we have dedicated local staff to really allow for that warm connection with our neighbors as well. This will increase your rural access. Walk-ins are welcome. I'm going to show you where we will be. Total vaccines right now, 35,000. One dose, how much of Calaveras residents have had one dose? About 50%. Fully vaccinated, we're at about 40%. You can see here, starting today, the clinics that will be available. Copperopolis, we move into Moke Hill tomorrow. You see Valley Springs on Thursday. The Grocery Outlet on Thursday as well. We're going to be at the Produce Days on Friday and Angels Camp Farmers Market. Saturday on the 12th, we'll be at Oak Shadows. So as you can see, very mobile, really trying to lean into our community here with that mobile van.
Ms. Allen?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind going back to the next, or the last slide?
Absolutely.
With one dose and fully vaccinated and 35,117 vaccines given, is that number based off of total population or 12 and older?
We have recalculated using the 12 and older population.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome. And with that, I want to remind you, myturn.ca.gov, and if we continue to get vaccinated, the closer we will get to that sense of normalcy that we're all striving for. Any questions?
Ms. Callaway.
Ms. Allen, I'm reading a little bit of confusion between Cal OSHA and what might come out on the 15th. So I do have a couple of questions, or three or four. One, if indoors, everyone has to mask, if one person in the room does not, is not vaccinated, is that a Cal OSHA? So let's take the boardroom. If those of us on this side of the barrier, if one of us have not been vaccinated, we all have to continue to wear a mask? Or, and to follow up on that, if we're outdoors, unvaccinated, have to wear masks? Is this going to be applying to county staff and employees?
I can see the county council is ready to respond to that on the Cal OSHA side, and yes, they are confusing and different, so.
Yes, Supervisor Callaway, as Ms. Allen indicated, we don't yet have Cal OSHA's written guidance, and things are therefore subject to change, or there may be minor details that change. But the short answer to your first question is yes, in the workplace, including here at the county. Unless we know that everybody is vaccinated, then masking is still required.
Okay. So on 7/31, distancing will be changed, and so will we be removing barriers, or is that too soon to say?
What I, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I mean, I think it's the same concept, is that unless we know that everybody is vaccinated, and that would include for departments which do interact with the public or have the public coming into their workspace. We obviously don't necessarily know whether members of the public are vaccinated, so the masking and the barriers will continue unless and until that changes.
Okay, so we will be following as county government Cal OSHA rules?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Allen, the health order, has anything been said on whether the health order will be lifted or not?
We have Dr. Ramirez here on the line, and I see, or Colleen, with health can respond to that?
There's been no decision right now to lift the health order as is. Keep in mind that we're to remain in line with the state. We can be more restrictive than the state, but we cannot be less restrictive than the state.
So there is no decision made on the health order, which is a separate issue than what might happen June 15th?
At this time, there's no change right now.
Okay, thank you. And one more question. How are the outline clinics doing?
I'm going to have Colleen respond to that.
Hi, Supervisor Callaway. So we are doing our best to be out and about in the county and to really encourage folks to get vaccinated, but I'm not going to lie, it's been quite challenging. Most people either are not coming, or if they make an appointment, they're not showing up. And so we really encourage our community to take advantage of these many, many clinics that we're offering and get vaccinated. We're trying to offer all of the different kinds. We always offer Johnson &amp; Johnson that one shot. So we really encourage, if you have questions or you're hesitant, definitely talk to your healthcare provider or somebody else that you trust to give you science-based information. And we just really encourage people to take advantage of these multiple clinics. But as of now, it's been pretty limited in the response by our community.
Thank you.
And I would just like to echo Colleen's sentiment with regards to vaccination, you know, and the question regarding the health order. I mean, if we want to move forward with this, it would be in the best interest of everybody to increase our numbers of vaccination as much as possible. This way, we can get on to resuming a more normal, sense of normalcy.
Thank you. Just FYI, the Utica great sign, as you start up Highway 4 from Murphy's, has said, "Get vaccinated, go to My Turn." So Caltrans is supportive.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further board questions or comments? With that, I'll move to public comment on the public health update. Do we have any public comment?
I do not have any on the line right now.
All right. If there's no further comments or questions by the board, I want to thank Ms. Allen and Dr. Ramirez. We appreciate the time you spent here and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Mr. Archer, if you have anything to add? There we go.
Hi, guys. No, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Yep.
With that, we'll move to general public comment. I just want to remind everyone, general public comments for, a general comment not to do with anything on the agenda, so, and I'll read it here. "Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30 minutes allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard." Do we have any public comment?
I have one public comment online.
Okay, I'll take it.
You may go ahead and start your public comment now.
Okay. I don't know how to turn on my camera here. Let me see. Okay, I guess you're not going to look at me. Well, here we go. Well, my name is Andrea Colavita-Pinkham, and I am the field representative assigned to Calaveras County for CIU 1021. I've sent in some written statements a couple of times, and I was going to show my face and introduce myself to those of you who I have not met yet. I have over 20 years of experience with CIU, and I plan to use that experience when we negotiate our successor agreement with the county beginning next month. The membership has elected a great team, and they are eager to get to work. We look forward to having adequate preparation time over the next month so that we can begin negotiations. There's no time wasted on semantics. Additionally, we are looking forward to negotiating in person and adhering to all necessary safety protocols. Getting a fair and equitable contract done on time is in the best interest of the membership and the residents of Calaveras County alike. Unfortunately, the items related to the assessor's office are being pulled from today's agenda. We have several questions related to how that office functions and if they're doing so within the bounds of our MOU. We did receive some answers to our request for information late yesterday afternoon, and we will be reviewing those. Unfortunately, at first look, they may lead to even more questions about how that office operates. We met with human resources twice on the issues that Ms. Davis has not joined our discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrea. Any further public comments?
I have none on the line right now.
Are there any comments in the room?
I'm not sure exactly. I'm here to talk about the fireworks ban, so would this be the time?
It will be during the agenda item. When it comes up, you'll have ample opportunity to make a comment.
Okay, so you're talking about public comment that is not on the agenda?
Right, exactly. Thank you very much. No further comment? With that, we'll move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Are there any board members that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Are there any staff members that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Are there any other parties that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? None? All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion. I'll move these items, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Thank you, Mr. Guerrimendi. We have a motion by Mr. Toffenelli, second by Mr. Guerrimendi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moves on a 5-0 vote of the board. 9:30. Good time. We'll move on to the regular agenda at this time. Resolution, Human Resources. Adopt a resolution appointing the county administrative officer and authorize the board chair to sign the employment agreement. Ms. Hawkins.
Sorry, I was joining as a panelist. Good morning. Good morning, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. I am happy to bring before you today a resolution for you to vote on adopting or appointing our county administrative officer. So I am proposing to you, Ms. Krista Von Latta, as our county administrative officer. She has been serving as our interim officer and has an opinion of many, doing a very good job, so I will leave it to you for any questions.
Any questions or comments by the board members? Ms. Callaway.
This agreement is for three years. I think it should be four, the same as county council. I'd like to see it modified.
Is there any at this? I'll bring that back around after comments, if you're all right with that, Ms. Callaway. Any further board comments? All public comment? Not this time. Anybody in the room? No? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board. I just, Ms. Von Latta, these last three to four months, you've filled a void. I really appreciate the work you've done. It seems that we've moved forward more refined. You've really shown a great amount of, you know, purpose and dedication to the county. You've been here for quite some time. I really appreciate everything you've done, and at this point, you know, you've earned this vote that's about to come before us, so I really appreciate that. So I want to give any other board members opportunities to talk, and then we'll discuss Ms. Callaway's proposal for a four-year term after board members. Other board members say what they have to say. Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, I just echo what Dan had to say about you. You've done a great job for us in the interim position part of it, so, thank you.
Let's keep it going. So do we want to entertain moving the contract from a three to four year? Mr. Toffenelli?
I believe it's two years, four years. This was a negotiated contract.
Right.
So if we change anything in it, then we have to.
Bring it back.
Either bring it back, I believe, or Krista can agree to that here, and then we can make adjustments, but it was negotiated, so.
Yeah, I just, thank you, Supervisor. Yeah, I just wanted to echo that. We certainly could make that change. The board could vote on the contract as amended, but there are two parties to it, so we could just ask Ms. Von Latta whether she is amenable to a four-year term as opposed to a three.
Ms. Von Latta?
It's on. Pardon me. Should the board wish it to be a four-year contract, I am completely amenable to that.
So you're a yes, Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes.
Ms. Callaway?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrimendi?
Yes.
Ms. Fuldorff?
I would also be a yes to that.
With that, I'd like to do it, but I'll give any other board member an opportunity to make a motion.
Sorry, if you don't mind, Supervisor, stop, but I think we need to have public comment.
I asked for it prior.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, no worries. You've got to stay on top of me.
I would just ask for the motion to be, to make the appointment and to approve the contract as amended.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Fuldorff, it looks like you're hitting your button.
Yes, I will move to approve the appointment and amend from three years to four years.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes up 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you very much. I do want to say, yeah, and if you have anything to say, Ms. Von Latta, please do. And I just want to say that her mom's in the room, and I just want to thank this esteemed lady for lending us her daughter, and it's good to meet you.
I'd just like to say thank you so much, including to everyone who I've known who has helped me to get here. I truly look forward to serving you and the county. This is an incredible privilege, and I look forward to working incredibly hard with you, getting a lot done, and having fun in the process, so thank you again.
Thank you. Let's get to having fun.
Maybe budget hearings wasn't the difference.
We'll move to item 23. It's an action item. Information technology. Approve the attached quote for Kohlhill's Consulting on the amount of $69,375 to conduct a business process review, BPR, of finance and HR payroll business processes by the end of 2021 in support of an upcoming upgrade of the One Solution Enterprise System. Two, authorize the county administrative officer or designee to execute agreement. Who wants to present this, Ms. Von Latta? Is it Ms. Hawkins, or?
I will be presenting on this from the mic.
Stan?
Yes. Yes, okay. Good morning, board. Thank you for giving me the chance to present this. And by the way, congratulations to Krista on her appointment. So what we are talking about today, we will be doing an upgrade to our enterprise finance system in the new fiscal year. That's One Solution. Vendor is Central Square. The last time that there was a major upgrade to this system was approximately seven years ago, so we are several releases behind, and we will be getting caught up with a separate engagement with the vendor doing that upgrade for us. A great deal of changes have taken place with what the software provides the ability to do. This business process review will work with a vendor that we have an ongoing relationship with. They will come in, they will help us to review the core business processes for the business areas that primarily use this system. They will document how we are using the system today. With their help, we will document an end state in terms of where we want to get to. That will help us to move along with new features of the. That will help us to move along with new features that the system allows and even areas that the system has allowed that we have not taken advantage of. It is the feeling of a core group of senior business leaders that are working with this system that this business process review is really required for us to get the most benefit out of this important enterprise system. So this process will take place over the next few months. We are going to start it in the second half of June, working with one of the business areas. And then we will be working in tandem with this major upgrade that I was talking about of the enterprise system. So this will involve key business people from the auditor, from administration, from HR and payroll. Is there, are there questions that we can address at this time for the board?
Board members? Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Stan, these upgrades to this system that we're talking about here, this is still not an integrated system with the system that payroll or the auditor's office uses. Is that correct? They're still two separate?
There are components of this that certainly are used by Human Resources and payroll runs with this system as well. It is not the integrated Human Resources system that we would like to ultimately get to. And certainly, the HR director can speak to some of the challenges that exist with that if you would like. But there are components that the Human Resources Department uses. It takes a great deal of redundant data entry and data management in the present state.
So do we have any type of plan going forward if we do this update? And I'm not sure, it says in here the length of time this update will last. But during the period of now going forward and updating this to the period it's served its use, can we work on integrating the two at some point? Between that time?
There, I believe that what we will find is that when we are working on developing a long-term IT plan, which the plan is to do that this fall, that there will be identified needs to work on additional Human Resources systems that would be in addition to the finance system that Human Resources uses now. So we do not have a solution on that identified. When we do, we will be coming back to the board with a plan for integrating that into the One Solution system, where we will either use components of One Solution or we will have another tool that will systemically integrate and get away from the process that requires as much manual duplication as we have today.
Thank you. Further board comments or questions? Public comment?
I do not have any online public comments.
Any public comment from the room? With that, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Gueramendi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moves on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, board.
Item 24, Resolution. Integrated Waste Management. Adopt a resolution pursuant to Government Code 25830 establishing the annual solid waste parcel fee schedule for the 2021-22 fiscal year and removing the exemption available to certain residences occupied on a part-time basis. Paul?
Good morning, Board Chair, Supervisor Stoppa, and Board Members. Paul Feriani with Integrated Waste. And I also have Jennifer Pratt with me. Hopefully, we can answer any questions.
Any board questions? Public comment?
I have no online public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the board. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Feriani. Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Yeah, wait, wait. I'm going to make sure I read the right one. I don't want to go back to the last one. Number 25, action item. Integrated Waste Management. Contingent upon adoption of the resolution in item 6123, introduce, waive full reading of, and two, authorize summary publication of a repeal of ordinance 2510 establishing a fee schedule and exemptions for solid waste systems. Mr. Feriani? Ms. Pratt?
Yes. Hi. Jennifer Pratt, Department Analyst for Integrated Waste Management. Again, we're here just for any questions that you may have today regarding the rescinding of the ordinance.
Any questions by the board members? Seems pretty straight. Oh, Mr. Toffenelli?
My question, I'm sorry, is for Sarah.
Yes.
Yeah, Sarah, since we're doing away with an ordinance and we're making a resolution, then we don't need to post this in the paper and wait 30 days for it to become effective?
We do. This is, it's a little weird, but as with most ordinances, yes, that is the process, even though all this ordinance is doing is rescinding or repealing a prior ordinance. That will be the process.
Okay, thank you. Any further board questions? Public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Very good. I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move this item and waive reading.
Thank you, Ms. Calloway. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Thank you for moving it forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes up 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you, Ms. Pratt. Thank you, Mr. Feriani.
Thank you.
With this, I'm going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break because I told some fire chiefs that we would not be hearing this till about 10 o'clock, and it's close enough to be able to take a 10-minute break. We're good? One second here. I just want to make sure I'm. Okay. Item 26, ordinance. County Council, introduce, waive reading, and adopt an urgency ordinance adding Chapter 8.09 to the Calaveras County Code. Regulating fireworks requires a 4/5 vote of the board. Ms. Edwards?
Good morning, board. I brought this ordinance forward at the request of two board members. It is an urgency ordinance, meaning that unlike most other ordinances, it would take effect immediately if adopted by 4/5 of the board. This would add a new chapter to county code. As stated in the staff report, currently, I believe, two of our fire districts ban all fireworks within their district boundaries, but there is no countywide fireworks regulation, much less a ban. So this would, if adopted by 4/5 of the board, would ban the sale, use, and possession of all fireworks, including safe and sane fireworks, within the unincorporated area of the county. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I'll start out that, you know, I was one of the two board members that brought this forward. It's been a hard decision for me, as someone that's grown up loving things that go boom and pop. You know, it's something I've conversed with our fire chief for the last two years. We've, you know, been hesitant about bringing it forward the last two years. As another supervisor once said to me in the past, sometimes it's better to be lucky than smart. Well, the last two years, we've been lucky. Now it's time to get smart before we have to worry about being lucky. So that's the reason that I was one of the two supervisors that stepped up and brought this forward. We've had an extravagant amount of fires, especially in District 1 and District 5 with Calaveras consolidated. 35 fires, chief?
Yes.
Yes. Well over 300 acres burned. We've been really lucky this year so far. We have great, great men out in the field that have stepped up and knocked it down. You know, all the fire chiefs, you know, come together when there's a fire in one area. You guys all do a great job. It's just the consideration. We've had the beautifier in the past. It's not a question of if it's going to happen again, it's when. And we've seen a significant rise in our foliage since the last fire. I don't want another old gulch fire. So this is the reason I'm proposing we go the smart route instead of crossing our fingers and hoping to be lucky. You know, it's celebration of our fourth. It's a part of our heritage. This has been incorporated into it, but it's not a, it's not even a question of constitutionality. It's, California's a tinderbox. And that pretty much sums up the reason why I brought it forward. I don't really have questions for Ms. Edwards on it. I just wanted to give it a solid explanation of where I'm coming from. But I also would like to introduce a timeframe to this urgency ordinance that, you know, part of the reason we brought this forward in the way we did and said let the fire districts do it is it came down to a matter of time and being able to apply it before the Fourth of July. Just going through the process, there wasn't time for posting and going through the fire districts putting forward their own resolutions and everything and bringing it back for the board. It just wouldn't have happened in a timely manner. So, you know, thinking I've talked to my fire chief and, you know, my proposition would be a five-month urgency ordinance that would give them plenty of time to put forward any thing they want in the future. But I think California is at a time where we go back to the smart. And fireworks is best served New Year's. You know, Fourth of July, we're in the heat. We can still have our fireworks over the lakes and everything according to this ordinance, you know, and celebrate it in that fashion. But it's, you know, California has come to a time where we need to start thinking about having our fireworks during the winter when it's wet out. And, you know, that's my line of thinking behind this. And I'll leave it at that.
Any other further board member questions or suggestions?
I'll wait for public comment.
Okay, I'll bring it to public comment. Sophie? Luhan?
Good morning. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you on behalf of the Rancho Calaveras Property Owners Association. My name is Sophie Luhan. I am the president. I am the proud president of the Rancho Calaveras Property Owners Association. What we, our organization, what we provide for our community is services for seniors. We serve lots of different exercise classes, water aerobics, and so on. We also have programs for families, children especially, teens, and small children. We also serve as a town hall for meetings, and it's a place where people come and they get information about what's happening in the county, what's happening in the community. We rent our facility for anyone that wants to come and give any kind of public notice, public opinion, or whatever. We, let's see. We also have, we own ponds where families come out for outings and enjoy fishing, teach their children how to fish, and how to enjoy nature, nature walks, and so on. The position that we are taking is that we believe that this is premature, that we are very, very dependent on the funding, the revenue that the fireworks, our fireworks stand, brings to our organization. This is a very short notice. As you have a budget, we also have a budget. And by banning this now, this really, really is going to hurt us. It might even put us out. We are, we do not get funding from you, from the county. We don't get any kind of government funding from anyone. We are totally dependent on memberships. And because of COVID, our memberships have been down. Families don't have the money to join our organization and to pay our membership dues. So we feel that the timing of this, we understand the importance of it. We understand that there are, I mean, we don't want to see anybody's house burn down. And I'm sure that when people come to our fireworks stand and they buy fireworks, they're not thinking, well, you know what? I'm going to burn down my neighbor's house. That's not the intent. The intent is to have a good time. The intent is for adults to be responsible and for them to be lighting the fireworks and for, not to put it in the hands of children or irresponsible people. Okay, that's our position. We also understand that the county also gets revenue. By banning it, it's not going to stop the fireworks. People are still going to go to other counties where they can buy them and bring them here. San Oslo County, Amador, I know people from Stockton and San Joaquin County. They banned it, it was banned years ago. And people come and buy them here in our county and take them back. So that's not going to stop, okay?
Sophie, I'm going to give you 15 more seconds. We're over here three minutes.
One more thing I just want to say. The fireworks that we sell, they're not boom and pop. They're not, okay? They don't explode. Those are the illegal ones that you're talking about, okay? We do not sell illegal. We sell legal fireworks. And we're asking for your support for our organization to survive. We're coming out of the pandemic. We have really, really struggled to keep our doors open. We're asking for your support, financial support as far as us keeping our doors open for our community. So we just feel that this is premature. The timing is terrible. So. So in something that I think that it can be, we can, it can be handled. We can maybe with the help of the fire department, have them come and do something at our, in our parking lot where people can have a place where they can light their fireworks safely. So I just want you to take all of that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. Further public comment? Okay, well, we have one in the audience that looks like it's coming up, and then we'll work to online.
Hi, thanks for letting me be here. I'm Amanda Kelly. I'm actually with Copperopolis PTC. We are the funding for our whole entire school. We are a sister school to Mark Twain, but of course, we are a smaller part of the school, so we have to fund everything for our school. Firework booth is our number-one fundraiser. Of course, last year because of COVID, we were not able to have any fundraisers. So the firework booth actually saved us in the long run. And we are a school that has sixty-three percent is low income. We pay for all our field trips. We pay for our school supplies. We pay for any upgrades that our school needs. So taking this away from us would be a big, big, dramatic for us. And not only taking it away from us, but you guys are taking another thing away from our kids that our kids enjoy every year is seeing these fireworks. I feel like we've already taken so much because of COVID from our kids. Why should we take this away too? We actually even have our fire department that buys our Big Bang package, and they take it to the firework, or sorry, to the fire station, and they actually make our community come there and let off fireworks. So I don't see, again, why she said, why can't we have our fire departments join us? We have paperwork all the time that we hand out to people saying things. And again, same thing that like happened last year. You know, we had our governor nuisance, say no fireworks. He banned it in a lot of counties. And what happened on the news? You guys saw all the illegal fireworks that they got out of state, brought to California, and started blowing off. What do you think what's going to happen if you banned it from our counties that a lot of people know and love? Like you said, you know, you grew up with that. So now you're going to take it away from our kids' generation that they don't get to experience that anymore. And I'm really devastated on that part as well. But on the same sense, like I said, it's our only thing. We spend forty thousand dollars a year. And again, it was only, it made us twenty thousand dollars this year, which was great. It only was half of what we got, of course, because of COVID, we scrambled for a lot of things. We've had it over twenty years, this booth, you know? And we, the only fireworks that have caused fires in our county was illegals. It was not safe and sane. On top of it, you know, if you guys are going to ban fireworks, then it seems like we need to ban, you know, weed eaters and lawnmowers and cigarettes, you know? Chains going on roads and stuff, because right now, that is what's causing fires, not fireworks. Again, you know, I think we have responsible adults that are making these fireworks go off, not kids. Again, it is for the kids, yes, but the adults are the ones that are setting them off. So like I said, it's going to be a dust stage for us because we know that we're not going to be able to have any more fundraisers for our school. And again, we spend forty thousand dollars for Copperopolis. And if we don't have this, you know, fundraiser, I don't know what we're going to do. And that's, again, you're taking another thing away from the kids because they're not going to have field trips. They're not going to have school supplies for their school. We have sixty-three families that are just not going to have, or sixty-three percent of families that will not be able to give what other kids could get at that school if we get this taken away from us. So I think we can work with our fire departments and maybe do something together with them. And two, we have a container.
I'm going to give you fifteen more seconds. We're over the three-minute.
We have another, another thing too, is we actually have already purchased everything for our firework booth. We've already spent a thousand dollars in a container that we will not be able to get reverse for it because we didn't know about this, and their deadline was ten days prior. So, I mean, we're already out of money now that you guys are doing this so last minute. But I appreciate you guys' time, and I hope you guys make a good decision today.
Thank you, Kelly. We have another person in the audience.
Hello, my name is Brianna Robinson. I'm also a member of the Copperopolis Elementary PTC along with Amanda. So I just want you guys to realize what you'd be taking away from us if you took away the fireworks booth. Because last year, we made twenty thousand dollars. That was twenty thousand dollars that helped to do so much. We give teacher grants to the school, so when your teacher says, we need new chairs for our classroom because some are broken, we need new school supplies, they come to us and we give them the money because our schools don't have the money to afford certain things like that. The brand-new playground that's at Copperopolis Elementary, money from the fireworks booth went to pay for that because we purchased that playground, the PTC did. So without that, I mean, we would not have been able to do that. It's one of our biggest fundraisers of the year. And not only that, we're, it was the only fundraiser we were able to have last year. So without it, we would have, we would not have had money to give to the school. So when the teacher said, we need new school supplies, we would have said, sorry. And that's more money out of the teacher's pockets. Why should they have to do that when we're here to help provide them with those things? And then also, like Amanda was saying, fireworks aren't going to go away. People are still going to go buy them somewhere else and bring them here. And not only that, people are going to go out of state and bring in the illegal ones. I understand not wanting the illegal ones. I don't want them either. What I want are safe and sane fireworks and for responsible adults to be using them. And we always have flyers at our booth that explain, these are for adults only, how to be safe, to always keep water around, things like that. And we give them out when we sell our fireworks so that people are aware of the rules. So we don't feel like also taking them away right now. We had already planned on getting our booth. We already put money down. We already purchased the trailer that's going to need to bring the fireworks. So if we don't do it, we're already out a lot of money. So, I mean, because we weren't even made aware of this until, I believe it was Friday or Saturday? Yeah, so we were already preparing. So I think this year at least, if we could go forward allowing our booths to open and maybe bring this up next year, I can understand that. But I think so close this year to already the Fourth is really going to hurt us. And without this, we don't know when we'll be able to do another fundraiser. We won't have the money for next school year. We had to scrape by this year. So I'm not sure what we would do if we didn't have this. And also, our kids have not been able to do much this year. This is one of the first fun things that they'll have to look forward to. My kids look forward to it every year. They love it, and we go to the fire department and we watch their display. Last year, they weren't able to do it because of COVID restrictions. I mean, I think we were all affected by COVID.
I'm going to give you fifteen more seconds. We're over the three-minute.
Okay, okay. But like Amanda said, I think it's just taking something from our youth, and they have nothing to look forward to right now because of COVID. So, thank you, though.
Thank you, Brianna. Any further public comment from in the room? Mr. Delorto.
Good morning. You've made a lot of changes since I was here last. Good to see you all.
Good to see your face.
I'm Mike Delorto. I'm the fire chief in McCallum Hill. I want to share a couple of things with you. I'm not on the same page as some of my fellow fire chiefs, which is unfortunate, but we're there most of the rest of the time. I've been with the fire department in McCallum Hill for fifty-four years. In that time, I went to two fires that were caused by fireworks. Both were caused by illegal fireworks, not legal fireworks. One was way back in the seventies. It was firecrackers. The other one was people launching bottle rockets from Amador County down the McCallum River, across the river. That one was bad. But safe and sane, I have not been to a fire with those. What I'd really like to talk about is the unforeseen consequences of such an action. Currently, most of the time, adults bring their little kids and explain to them what's going on, and they provide the safety and the training. Two things will happen. Adults will still go get the fireworks, and they'll still have a good time with their kids, and they will show their kids that they can defy the law. That's not good, okay? The other thing is, is you'll have people that also don't. They do abide by the law. They don't have fireworks with their kids. They don't train their kids. So the kids will get the fireworks anyway, and they will go out without training. That's going to be a problem. But then, not counting that, it's illegal. Nine-one-one, somebody's using fireworks. Well, maybe we'll send the sheriff. Well, pretty soon, the sheriff's going to go like, I got other important things to do. I mean, this is important, but whatever. So we'll just transfer it over to Cal Fire, and they will call McCallum Hill, or they'll call somebody else or whatever. And we will go out without the, we don't have the ability to cite. We don't want the ability to cite. So you're going to be taking up resources. All these unintended consequences of something that sounds good is up to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delorto. Mr. Dickinson.
Good morning. Rich Dickinson, fire chief, Calaveras Consolidated. I'm going to stand before you and thank you for being proactive instead of reactive. I don't think I have to tell any of you. Just follow our Facebook and watch what we've been up against this year. I've reached out to you. I've reached out to the Rotary a couple of years ago. As you know, I came from the Bay Area, and, you know, way back when, years ago, we stopped fireworks, safe and sane. And I'll fight everybody, putting an incendiary device in people's hands. I lived, I moved up here twenty-seven years ago. I have two kids, six grandkids, and it's very difficult being a leader, being a fire chief, but my mission statement says protect lives and property. That's my mission. It's not about charity. I have charity. We hurt more than anybody in the county for my fire district who, basically, we have volunteers, they make absolutely nothing, they work a twenty-four-hour period, probably make about a buck an hour, but we go out, our fuel costs are off the charts, we constantly responding on vehicle accidents with car fires, with vegetation, whether it be weed trimmers, whatever. But the gut in my stomach for all of you in this community, for people in incendiary device, what I call it, grass and weeds, right now, as you know, it's drier than it's ever been for us. Whether you want to call it global warming, whatever you want to call it, but we are having unprecedented fires, like I said, over thirty-five. And of those thirty-five fires, about twenty-nine to thirty of them are from human cause. So for me, when I have people coming and buying fireworks, I have to think about, there's the vocal minority and the silent majority. And at the end of the day, I have to make some decisions that can be very difficult. But I caution all of you, the world has changed, and all it takes is someone, and I hate it when this comes from me and it comes to my fire marshal, and it's already been assigned, sealed, delivered to allow fireworks in our community, but, and it's if, it's not when, or it will be when, not if, but when it does happen, the attorneys, they're coming after me personally, they're coming after my family, they're coming after our fire board, because who allowed this? That's the hard part you have to understand. Who allowed this fireworks to, who allowed them to have incendiary devices? Because choices have consequences. So at the end of the day, when our community, because a weed eater, I mean, a couple, a month ago, a horse on Snyder Ranch, the horseshoe, the horseshoe of the horse sparked on the rocks and started a fire. So we're normally at this time of the year, kind of green going to brown, but because of the drought, what's going on, it's been unprecedented what's going on. And when we show up, I try, you've heard me say this for three and a half years, I try with my guys to keep the fire, try to get an initial attack to keep that thing be able to two to three acres before it starts to become what I'm going to call a large event on initial attack, and Cal Fire has to bring all the resources in with aircraft to try to get control of this. You've seen the El Campo fire. You've seen Langford-Pacheco. You've seen multiple over and over again, and we are surprised with the amount of fire activity where it happened and amount of acreage that it's taken.
So, Mr. Dickinson, I'm going to give you fifteen more seconds.
Okay, so what I'm promoting is I understand. I understand everybody how they feel. All I'm asking is for Phantom Fireworks and TNT, have a conversation with the groups, and just change your date. Change your date to December, New Year's Eve. It's a great time. Everything's green. I don't have to have that stomach acid in my tummy of worrying on a hundred-degree day that we're going to have a fire. And I'm willing to work and just basically postpone the charity and do it in December, you know, for fireworks. That's what I'm looking for. Not trying to ban it permanently, but at least just do a research, and I'm sorry, but California, we've got to change the way we do business right now. I'm sorry, you know? My job is this, that mission statement, protect lives and property, not charity. That's my, that's my mission. And I don't want to stand in front of KCR3, Channel Three, and try to explain why seventy-five homes burned because of fire, safe and sane fireworks. Chief, why did you allow them? And here comes the attorneys, and you've seen what they've done to PG&E, you know? So anyways, that's my two cents. I'm willing to help everybody out. Just change your dates.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Mike Johnson with Evans Pass Fire District. I brought this piece of paper up here, and it has absolutely nothing to do with our topic, so that's interesting. We've had the fireworks ban up at Evans Pass as part of our fire ordinance for a long time, and I just kind of thought I would step up and just give you a little bit of overview of what that means and how it's worked in our area. It's been relatively unique that we are the area in Calaveras County that does not allow what you guys are talking about today. We've worked closely with the county over the years to provide citations if need be. It's only a couple a year at most that is, you know, a notice to appear in court. We work with the court systems for a couple of dates, and then people go there, and it's usually a misdemeanor or something along those lines. We feel like it's worked rather well. We put signs up. We tell people, hey, they're not allowed here. We feel as if one fire prevented from any source is part of our mission to try to do that. It's extra, extra dry this year. I understand why you would choose this year to put this into play. I also understand it's not a very popular thing to do for a lot of the fundraising as well. Really, beyond that, I think that if you look at, you know, Tooluma County doesn't allow any. I don't believe Mariposa allows any. Amador doesn't allow any except for in the incorporated areas that have decided differently, which would be similar to City of Angels Camp would do something like that maybe. Amador, or Eldorado County doesn't allow any. And I think we're one of those counties in that contiguous body of the motherload area that you may want to consider following suit. It's really up to you. We have allowed to do a permitted couple of events with a safe and sane display with a couple of the HOAs. And really, we kind of have allowed that and gone out there and had a presence. Some of them were on a dock on a lake or something along those lines. So maybe there's some options, and I think Chief Dickinson makes a really good point that, you know, hey, the New Year's Eve or something like that could be an opportunity to open those fundraising things back up. And in any case, I don't know if there's any questions about our program or effects positively or negatively it may have had on the community.
I do have one question, if you don't mind. Something I heard down from the Bay Area, that when they banned safe and sane, there's a noticeable drought in illegal fireworks at the same time. Have you noticed the same thing?
Really, the only thing that we see are people that have vacationed or come up to our area, that have driven through areas where they are allowed. And I don't fault them for that. They stop at a fireworks stand, they put them in the car, they claim they don't see any of the amber signs over the highway coming up the hill, and then they're at the vacation home, second home, Airbnb, VRVO, whatever. And we actually go there and educate them, and essentially the way And essentially, the way it works is if you pass the attitude test and our fire trucks show up and they say, oh, my gosh, I had no idea, we put them out, they put them out in front of us, typically, it's just an educational piece at that point and it's done. I have not seen an illegal type of firework activity in our area. I've just seen the safe and sane ones that have come into our area probably as they've been traveling up the hill. Just to add on to that, our rural communities have seen, at least in our area, in District 3, have seen such an influx of people coming out to visit, recreate since the COVID-19 pandemic. So there, with more people comes the more possibility of something happening. We've just seen an influx of visitors and people coming up in our areas. So I'm happy that we have something in place to help us mitigate the increased, you know, opportunity that human caused anything brings to our area.
Thank you. Any other forward questions? Thank you. I do have one.
Sorry, Mr. Toffenelli.
How long has it been in place, your ban?
I know that the current one says it's 2012 and I think it predates that, I believe. Maria, would you supervise at Calaway?
It's been over 20 years.
Probably 20 years now.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further comments from the audience? We'll do the online ones?
You can go ahead and make your online comment now.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Marissa. And I recently attended a Neighborhood Watch meeting where we did have speakers on the fire department present, and it was acknowledged that the fireworks that are launched are the ones that typically cause the problems. And I completely agree that when families use their safe and sane fireworks, they are cautious, they are very cautious, and it's their property that they're protecting. A question that I have for you is would there be a way that we could only allow safe and sane fireworks in certain areas of the county? Maybe in, around the lakesides? Or in streets? Or in parking lots? And I really do agree with a lot of the comments that it is way past the time where this should have been decided upon. It is really hurting the nonprofit organizations right now, and I'm also part of the RCPOA, and it would be just a horrible blow to us. We would lose, well, last year, we made enough money to keep us afloat. We could plan other fundraisers for next year, but the blow that this impact takes on us is horrible. And I do, you know, I do, I am concerned about our environment and the fire situation. Also, I would be willing to volunteer to monitor designated areas. If there's a designated area for fireworks, I'd be happy to sit there with fire extinguishers, hoses, and just make a day out of being careful with the fireworks. Make a night of it. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marissa. Any further comments?
There are no further online comments, no.
I'll bring it back to the board. Ms. Calaway?
This subject has come up innumerable times over the last 25 years, plus or minus. And I've always had been a proponent of if an area wants to outlaw fireworks, then they outlaw it in their respective areas like Central Fire, Evans Pass Fire has. And as passionate as Chief Dickinson is, and I understand that, his fire district has had the opportunity to outlaw fireworks within that respective district. So on one hand, I'm very sympathetic and I agree that we need to do something. On the other hand, we've talked about this for years and the fire districts have not stepped up to do it. But I think there's opportunities here. And I was just thinking of them as the school district talk. As Chief Johnson said, he has given authority and this ordinance allows it to happen, that the chief for the respective fire district can set up an agreement with Copper School or an HOA to do it within their respective areas. So that's something that maybe Copper could work out with the chief for the Copper Fire District. Is there a place that you could do it in Copper on the school parking lot? Or you buy forward, you go to your booth, you buy whatever sparkles or safe and sane, and they're donated to the Copper Fire District, and the Copper Fire District does the action for that respective kid or family. So to me, there's options out there. The ordinance allows for options for the, that work for a respective fire district. So I think that could be a start instead of saying it's a total ban. So there might could be designated areas that it would be agreed to. So as much as I had a problem with wanting to approve this ordinance, because fireworks are sure fun and holding, being a kid and holding a sparkle in your hand, it doesn't get any better than that. So I will support this. I will also support the chair's recommendation that there be a five-month cap on this ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Calaway. I do want to say thank you for bringing up those points. Mr. Dickinson and I did actually talk about this in depth. You know, there is the opportunities provided in this ordinance. I think Mr. Toffenelli actually made the suggestion to put it into the ordinance that would allow for opportunities for respective fire districts to do just what you talked about. So, you know, working with your respective fire chiefs would give you the opportunity to possibly work out a safe area to do these type of things. Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am the second supervisor that asked to bring this forward, and I want to thank Sarah for working on it as diligently and as fast as she got it together. And there is allowances in here. I talked with, my fire chief is Rich in Calco, and putting some things forward. Somebody's phone?
Yeah, somebody's phone.
So we could work out some, so there's some leeway for the fire chiefs to be able to do something which has been talked about here. It also gives them leeway for any fireworks displays that are public displays, like the boosters put on over Hogan Dam, although it's not going to happen this year during the course of this ordinance. So I really want to put forward that this ordinance is, it has a limited time on it, and it's to get through the fire season. One of the main reasons that I was in favor of bringing this forward and in favor of this ordinance is just the Campo fire. Right at the first part of May, we weren't even in fire season yet. Fire season doesn't start until June. We're just starting normally in a normal year, the fire season. Since that time, the number of fires in just District 5 and District 1 exploded, and they were constantly, it seemed like every other day, they're out putting out fires. And Ben and I are in very close contact with our fire chiefs, so we know when they're out of fire, when they're putting the fire out, how big it was, you know, if we want to know what equipment they had to use. That's before the fire season has even started. We're already there. And the extreme conditions that we're facing, even because of the drought and even the water restrictions we're facing per the governor and the legislature going forward this year, it puts complete restrictions on what the fire departments have to face going forward into this year. And this won't stop normally, November 1st is the end. I think last year went past November 1st. We were almost, we were in December before the fire season actually ended. We have no idea this year what's going to happen. But the suggestion that we could probably do it on December 31st, New Year's Eve, we can work with the fire departments on that. This ordinance will be over by then. This is not a permanent ordinance. This is not something that's going to be going forward unless the board decides to do it a later date when it comes to an end to go forward on it. But it's just for this year because of the extreme conditions that we are facing here in Calaveras County and California and south. So that's why I was in favor of bringing this forward. Ben and I had spoke to Rich numerous times, going back to April, first part of April, when the conditions really started turning dry at that time. So I'm in favor of this ordinance and I'm in favor, it does give fire chiefs the ability to make decisions, to work out some of the things that Marita was talking about and other public displays.
And if I may, Supervisor Toffenelli and Board, I can, to address that desire of the board, or a majority of the board, to have it expire within, in approximately five months, what we can, what I can do is just write into the first subsection of this ordinance that it's of limited duration and shall automatically expire on November 30 or whatever date the board chooses without further action by the board.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
I got something to say. My name is Adrian. Are you guys all elected officials? If you end up closing down these non-mobots, you guys will all be voted on this. I don't give a fuck, fuck you.
I want to say something too. Five months or whatever it is. Whenever that thing expires.
You had your opportunity for your comment.
Fuck you too, okay?
Any further? Mr. Toffenelli?
So I'm going to be a little repetitive, so bear with me. I'm going to acknowledge what Supervisor Stoppa said earlier, stating that our environment is changing and we do need to work to be smarter and evolve with the current climate. And some of my comments will echo what Marita Supervisor Calaway mentioned. While I can support the emergency ordinance this year due to all of the points that have been made by the fire chiefs and their recommendation for this ordinance and working with the respective supervisors on this, I do want to point out that within the ordinance, to the community members that have concerns, that if you look at District 8.09.060A, it will allow public fireworks display to work with their respective fire chiefs in their districts to provide the respective experiences. I have, over the last couple days, I know I have not spoken with you guys directly, I have reached out with school board members, school leadership, school board members, a few fire board members and community leaders and members and talked about their concerns of exactly what you have expressed. Parents want to share the experience that we all grew up having. I cherish those memories with my parents and my grandparents, but at the same time, I have to recognize that we've got to provide an avenue for some type of enforcement. With the ordinance going back, I would request that it be brought back to provide clear expectations of what a safe and sane area will be to allow these community fundraisers to happen. And whether that be at the school locations, the firehouse itself, I think that we need to acknowledge and recognize that. I know that your mother home is up in Angels Camp, and I would suggest and encourage to work with the Mark Principal Board and the city fire chief to find a reasonable solution if Copper Fire is unable to work with you. I think that there are options out there and I would encourage those conversations to be had. But again, back to what the other supervisors have mentioned, I think we need to leave and I think also that, I don't think, I know that the fire chiefs also need to work with their respective districts to ensure that they communicate. Because the communication coming directly, when you're pushing an avenue like this, I shouldn't be the last to be heard about it. And I expect the same with them communicating to their constituents and their respective districts to ensure that they are known, told ahead of time. It shouldn't be today that they've been told about it. So, thank you.
Mr. Gueramendi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, in four and a half years, there was the first one who flipped us the bird. So that's always something new under the sun in Calaveras, but not the first one to tell us where to go on the way out. My question is, City of Angels, is the City of Angels, where are they, where's Angels Camp with their ordinance? Are they, are they going to be the donut hole here? Chief?
So in the City of Angels, John Warbaugh, Fire Chief, City of Angels Camp, also Altaville Boney's Fire District. And we're sort of on the holding pattern. This is a hot topic for us that we've been discussing as well, and we were going to bring some stuff up to the city recently based on Rich's talking with you guys about a single ordinance. And then we found out that the county was potentially taking a position, so we're sort of waiting to see that, and that'd be the top priority for me in the morning, to meet with the city administrator and have some discussions about that. I don't know how that's going to play out at this point. It'd be premature to make a statement on that, but I'll be talking to the, you know, city administrator and electeds probably first thing in the morning to see how we want to pursue that. I do want to say that I agree with Chief Dickinson. You know, again, we're thinking about, you know, safety, public safety here of life and property, and the key, you know, and the timeline right now is just the weather and the conditions out there, and I would hope maybe we can work with the different fundraisers to maybe do it on New Year's Eve, and maybe that's the new normal where they can do those fundraisers then. I can tell you, as the chief of the two districts, I'd be willing to work with, like we're talking about, maybe have areas of isolation where this is the place where we can set those up and do that there and have fire trucks there on standby. We do do that in the city at Bret Hart High School. That's our big thing. We have hundreds, thousands, sometimes people show up there. We normally have two fire trucks out there, and it works out great for the community because everybody gets to see everybody's display. So it isn't, you know, so it's sort of nice. So more to come though for the city, and I probably won't know more till tomorrow.
Thank you. My concern is obvious.
Sure.
It doesn't do much good if everybody could just go to Angels Camp and buy it on the other side of the line.
Yeah, I understand that, and for me, again, it would be premature for me to make any statements, not having formal communication with the city manager or the electeds on the topic yet.
Okay, well, I'm going to hope that we're not getting... Marita?
Chief, I have a question. When you do it at Bret Hart?
Yes, ma'am.
Can individual families do it themselves?
Yeah, we basically, basically it's set up, it's back there by the baseball field. It's a huge, huge parking lot. Everybody comes in, people are checked in, they go through, we have, you know... And we make sure people are staggered out in a safe area and stuff like that. It's actually normally a really nice event.
I've seen the same thing in McCallum Hill. Mr. Delorto's brought in to Main Street, had, you know, fire officials there in the past. And I, you know, just providing a safe place for people to do it. And, you know, so I appreciate the input.
I just want to be clear that I'd be very disappointed if all the stands are suddenly located in the City of Angels tomorrow morning. That would be a real, I would consider that a betrayal. So hopefully that will not happen. You know, one of the things, I have problems with this. I'm sharp enough in math that I can count to four, but I do have some problems I feel like I need to address. One is our fire districts are responsible for fire protection for our communities. We give them that authority. I've got one district of the three that I represent that has banned it. I got one that, not so much, and one that's against this. I would really like to see before we bring forward formal ordinance, our fire districts go through this process and make this commitment too. Many ways, we're jumping ahead of our fire districts who should be voting on this. And then coming to us and saying, hey, we've got some, everybody's, the county area sheep branch, which is the only county responsibility that we have, has all the fireworks. Then we plug that hole and we'd be universal. So I would hope that chiefs will go back to their respective districts and ask them to partner with us so that we're not the only bad guys sitting up here. I agree with my chief, Mo Kill, regarding access to fireworks. If people, if we ban something, then only bad guys do it. And we don't teach our kids respect, responsibility for the fireworks. But I'm also the guy who represents where the big fire burnt through, so I'm very sensitive to this. I have grave concerns about enforcement. We don't have enough volunteer firefighters to start, let alone going door to door and busting everybody. And I know our sheriff's deputies don't want to be in that business either. So when this comes back, I would like to have that clarified on who's going to be in charge of this. And then where's the amnesty box for guys like us, guys like me who've gotten plenty of fireworks stashed away to put away? And we do do our fireworks on New Year's, but that's just how we rule about them. So thank you for talking about the City of Angels. I hope that when this comes back, our fire districts will be more involved. And that's one of my questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Topfenneli.
To Jack's statement, Sarah, you said you could write this where it ends at a certain date and it won't come back. Does it need to come back to us because it just ends?
Right, so the board could adopt this today by a four-fifths vote. It would go into effect immediately. I can, while you've been talking, I wrote in an expiration. I wrote in that the purpose and intent is to protect the public during the 2021 fire season and that this urgency ordinance is of limited duration and shall automatically expire at the end of November. But it could still be adopted by the board today alternatively, or if there are larger scale changes. I could bring this back at a subsequent board meeting, but yes, it can be adopted as an urgency ordinance today. If the board at any point intends to put more permanent ordinance into place, that would obviously come at a future meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Callaway.
I heard what Supervisor Gueramendi said, and that's what I said. But I think what this does, because it isn't going to happen with all the districts before that we approve it for this year, for the five months, as Supervisor Stoppa recommended, and let the fire districts work on it. Because if we're going to wait for them to work on it, then they have to call special meetings. To me, the time is short, that this is a one-time pass for all of us. And then we can discuss it if it comes back, if it comes back next year.
I understand. I think that'd be a good discussion to have. I will note that when we brought this up, what, two, three years ago, I can't remember, all the fire chiefs told us they didn't want to ban. And that was universal. So obviously, times are changing.
Ms. Fulmburg.
I just want to clarify too, I don't want to be back in this position next year. So if we're going to do this, I mean, year after year, emergency ordinances with this type of a timeline, that's not, that's not reasonable. So if we're going to go through this, I expect that there's going to be support and partnership from the fire district to continue this because I don't want to see the audience again on this topic.
Yes, and just to be clear Supervisor Fulmburg, in order to pass an urgency ordinance, you know, the board has to make findings that it's necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health and safety. And so that, this is, you know, this ordinance incorporates findings that, as many folks have spoken to this morning, that this fire season, unfortunately, we are anticipating to be very bad. We've already seen fires. So this is drafted to be particular to this fire season. And as you say, if, if the board chooses to put a more permanent ordinance into place, that obviously would look different.
Mr. Topfenneli.
Just listening to the comments and understanding a uniform front from the fire agencies and how we come to some sort of agreement through resolutions of individual boards or what have you, we'll start working on that as early as tomorrow, at least the discussion. So I'd say it's very reasonable by the end of the moratorium, if approved, that we could come back to you with something official from everybody and give you a recommendation. Obviously, as of today, some are all in on one side or all in on the other. So it'll take a lot of discussion, but we'll get working on that. Thank you.
The respective fire districts do have an opportunity to make their decisions in their areas and bring them to the board. Also, the JPA does have the ability to come together with everybody throughout the county. So I think there's multiple avenues. You know, this beyond the two substandard comments that were voiced, I really, a lot of people that are opposed to this, you're talking to my heart, this is a very hard decision. It's been a very hard decision coming forward with this. You know, it's, you know, it's something we all grew up with. And I do, I do want to thank Sophie, Luhon and Marissa for speaking up for Rancho Calaveras and everything that they do. Throughout COVID and everything else, everyone's had a very hard time in raising money. And I know this is, you know, just going to hit farther below the belt and take away. But I have to, I have to take all points and considerations and protection of the people within my district or throughout the county is one of the things I have to take first and foremost. Money is all, can always be a hardship, but when we lose 500-plus homes in one fire, it's just devastating. And that's, that's, that's the juggle I have, you know? And again, I'm going to say I'm going to be smart this time before I'm going to get lucky. So, you know, first steps to making it. So I'll entertain a motion by the board.
Sarah, the motion has to be made with the five-month.
Yes, so what I did, and I'm probably not, well, maybe I can share my screen. Let's see, if I can share my screen here. Oh, I can't. So what I did, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. So what I did is, as you'll see in red, I just added the red text. So at the beginning, it says the urgency ordinance is of limited duration, shall automatically expire. I said November 30, that's five months through the end of the fifth month from now, without further action, but I can change that, without further action by the board. I added that the purpose is to protect the public during the 2021 fire season. And then down at the end, I just reiterated, you'll see the red text again, that the ordinance shall expire automatically without further action of the board on November 30, 2021.
Mr. Chair, I will move this item with the changes that were made by Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Topfenneli. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board? Or, I didn't hear you.
I got such a coming up out of this, so I'm going to go with you guys. Yes.
Okay. 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you. Again, this isn't likely, I need a, I need a break. Five minutes.
Flashbacks? I hope so. Sophie. Rich? Hey.
We'll be reconvening. So get to the right spot here. Thank you, Robin. We're on Item 27, Action Item, Administrative Office. Conduct the fiscal year 2021-22 Recommended Budget Hearings. Receive presentations on the recommended budget from the CAO and various department heads and provide the CAO with direction for any requested changes to the recommended Ms. Von Latta.
Mr. Chair.
C A O Von Latta.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good morning. Krista Von Latta, C A O. Thank you. So this morning, I bring to you the recommended budget for fiscal year 2021, 2020, 2021, sorry. Let me start over. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. And we will go from there with the PowerPoint. Great. Great. Starting over, we bring to, I bring to you the fiscal year 2021-2022 Recommended Budget. So this budget will first discuss the overall budget message, the budget landscape, influences on the budget, the revenue snapshot for the general fund, budget requests, personnel requests, our structural deficit and the recommendations for your board to consider. First, to just discuss the overall budget message, somewhat similar to what we saw last year, although we'll get to some major departures later in the presentation. If you'll recall, last year, we recommended a 5.3% reduction from the general fund contribution at the point of recommended budget. That move was made in an order to close the gap between projected revenues and projected expenditures. We have included that in this year's budget at this time. Just to be very clear, that number is the same number that was included in most general fund budget units last year, not based on this current year's budget. So it is that same number that you would have seen in last year's budget at this time. The budget is overall balanced. Reserves are just over the policy level of 8.2%. Contingencies are at the policy level of 8.2%. The general fund reserve is at about 4.2 million. Revenue assumptions are generally conservative, but we're going to talk more about that, generally speaking, to stay the course as we did last year. Serious recommendation that we have a study session in August, either after the books are closed or when we're close enough to knowing what those ending fund balances are going to look like, that we can have a conversation in anticipation of recommended budget, or final budget rather, and adjustments to be made in the adopted budget in September. Again, we'll speak about this later, but the American Rescue Plan is, and those funds are still under evaluation by administration. That is, again, a conversation that we'll be having with you over the course of the next of July and August so that we can incorporate board direction after recommendations have been made to your board with respect to that funding. So budget landscape, CARES Act funding. CARES Act funding was pivotal in our ability to get the budget over the finish line at this past fiscal year. Those funds have been mainly either used in this current year budget or remain in contingency. They are part of what is now our fund balance projection as of June 30th, 2021. Borrowing from special revenue funds. If you'll recall, we have been borrowing REM funds in order to complete the 2017 and 2019 disaster projects. Those loans are still in place. They are also budgeted for this current fiscal year. We anticipate all projects, I believe, I will let Public Works correct me if I'm wrong, but anticipate all of those projects being completed in this current fiscal year such that we can budget all reimbursements next fiscal year, if not before. Teeter transfer to balance. As you know, we've made a teeter transfer to balance for the prior two budget cycles. We are also including one to balance the books this year. As for the past, or the year prior, we do not anticipate making any teeter transfer to actually close this fiscal year end. But it is a mechanism by which we use borrowing in order to close the gap between our projected revenues and projected expenditures. The American Rescue Plan Act, as I just spoke to, it's, we're still working through the guidance. The guidance has been not as, not as clear, I suppose I would say, in terms of appropriate uses for our county. There will be plenty, I believe. But in order to make the recommendations to your board, we are going to go through and audit all revenues, not just our general fund revenues and our general revenues budget unit, but other revenues that are, that were potentially affected by COVID in order to get a better picture of where we might be able to backfill for lost revenue, do more research and then bring recommendations to a future board meeting in anticipation of when we put the final budget together for September. That funding, as you I'm sure know, is approximately $8.9 million. There will be appropriate uses. One of them could be to put some of those funds into essentially a savings account to see whether we experience revenue shortfalls between, during the period of the funding is available, so between now and December of 2024. So what does the budget include? Salary savings of approximately $2.2 million. This is a general reduction, not intended to be a reduction in salaries and benefits. And this is the re-budget of the 5.3% cut that we were forced to make last year at this time in order to close the gap. Projected, pardon me, projected fund balance used to balance approximately $7 million. It's in August when the books are closed that we'll actually have as of June 30 that fund balance number. So the work that we've done at this point in order to arrive at that projection brings us to $7 million. That is up approximately $3 million from 2020, 2021. That said, that's essentially CARES Act funding. That's where we see that funding. Remains to be seen whether we'll be able to apply the American Rescue Plan funds to the general fund, so that is premature, and we should not anticipate that to be the case at this point. The prior fiscal year, the fund balance was down $3.2 million over the prior year. The prior year, the fund balance was down $3.3 million over the prior year. So we're running at essentially a $3.2, $3.3 million fund balance deficit, or a deficit year over year, with the exception of this past year, and again, I note CARES Act funding, which is clearly one-time funding that we should not expect on a year-over-year basis. General revenues overall are above the reduced projections that we made this time last year. We made very conservative revenue assumptions. We'll talk more about that in a few minutes. Salary savings are projected to be approximately $3 million at the end of the fiscal year. That number is included in the $7 million fund balance projection. What's interesting to note there is despite the fact that the 5.3% cut, albeit not intended to be used as, to cut salaries, but rather to be spread across expense line items as department heads see fit, even with that, we are still going to be closing with approximately $3 million. So we know that we have extra funds tied up in salaries and benefits, and part of that is turnover, but another part of that is that we make, we make very conservative assumptions with respect to how we budget for our positions, specifically our vacant So in terms of the forecasting policy, we generally construe one of two, and in this case, I'll suggest a hybrid model, but the first basic approach that I'll discuss is a conservative approach. This is where all revenues, or revenues generally, are budgeted to be low with expenditures budgeted to be high. The good news in this respect with this approach is that it reduces likelihood of shortfall. The risk is that it's harder to balance, and you see larger swings. I think that since we have taken a conservative approach in recent years, that is one reason why we have the gap that we regularly talk about between our projected revenues and projected expenses. On the alternative, we've got the idea of budgeting the revenues and expenses as accurately as possible. The good news there is that it's typically easier to balance, but then if you make an incorrect assumption, there's much more exposure and the potential for, especially at this point, for things to change quickly and end up at a bad position, whether it's at final budget or at the mid-year budget, or somewhere else along the line. This budget is generally conservative, although particularly as it relates to our sales tax, TOT, and Prop 172, where we didn't see the types of decreases in revenue that we were concerned about at this point last year. While still conservative, we have adjusted those assumptions to be more consistent with what we think we can expect at this point. So, unknown factors. COVID-19 remains to be an unknown. Whether there's gonna be a potential economic downturn, whether we're experiencing a bubble, pardon me, economically, remains to be seen. As you know, we are entering negotiations with all bargaining units, with contracts expiring on September 30 of this year, so we can anticipate potentially incurring additional MOU increases. Further to that bargaining, I've already touched on the American Rescue Plan Act, ongoing local business impacts, unemployment, as we know, CalPERS unfunded liability, IHS increases, IHSs increases, I'll actually scratch from this for now, after conferring with Health and Human Services. We believe that at least at this point, the county is in a good position moving forward in that respect, and then, of course, other unknowns. So, to take a step back and remind ourselves what we did at this point last year and what the recommendations were at the onset of COVID, with many, many unknowns at that point, we reduced the projection for sales and use taxes by 25% from what the prior fiscal year budget was. So, not actuals, but budget. And when we did that, the general fund took an $825,000 hit. In a year where, just for calibration sake, in a year where we were expecting the economy to continue to expand and revenues to go up, we would look at prior year actuals if they were greater than prior year budget, and then have a conversation. And when I say "we," I mean myself, the auditor's office, we have guidance that we've received in this regard, et cetera. Last year being such a question mark, we were extremely conservative. Prop 172, typically tracking sales and use taxes, we made the same reduction, which, again, was another $427,000 reduction to the general fund and almost $50,000 to fire districts. Now, as a reminder, we did adjust Prop 172 at mid-year. There is a mandate that those funds are spent in a certain way, so there has been a reset for Prop 72. With respect to the TOT, we made a drastic reduction of 50% due to the concerns over lockdowns and not being able to travel whatsoever for TOT. And again, that reduction was made after the prior year budget as opposed to actuals. In this particular case, those were essentially the same. So what that meant overall was a $750,000 reduction, approximately half of which hit the general fund and the other half of which hit the Calaveras Visitors Bureau and Fire. And just as a reminder, when I talk about a general fund reduction as it relates to the TOT, what I mean is that what those, that TOT funding backfills for the general fund is the Roads Department maintenance of effort and the Sheriff's Department general fund contribution that would otherwise be made. And then certain other revenues were reduced, in some cases, by a third. Not property tax, not vehicle license fees, or things like the tobacco settlement or franchise fee that we know to be relatively static, but other things like interest, for So what are we increasing this year, particularly as it relates to those reductions that were made last year? Measure C and G, approximately $1.8 million increase. So, of that figure, approximately 2.7 of the total 3.2 is as a result of commercial growth, and the dispensary projected revenue is approximately half a million dollars. So total $1.8 million over what was budgeted for excise tax last year. Sales and use taxes similarly went up, we're projecting, by $1.4 million, for a total of 3.6. I believe that to be conservative, as does the auditor. Prop 72, 172, up by approximately $700,000. And just so you understand how we came to that projection, those were as of March 31, 2021, actuals. And the TOT also up by $900,000, which would end up with a $410,000 contribution to the CBB, to fire districts, to roads, and to the Sheriff's Department, which is substantially more than was budgeted this past year. So what's interesting about that particular number is that, given that it's conservative, and we can talk more about this later in the presentation, but should the board wish to remain with the 25, 25, 25, 25 allocation that the TOT has been subject to since it was increased from 6% to 12%, then this figure would still be consistent with increasing, or to the extent that the idea of wanting to do a lookback were, what the board wanted, the approach that the board would like to take, this would be consistent with that. This number could be adjusted, presumably up at final budget after the fiscal year and books are closed, and we know what the actual number is for fiscal year 2021. That's a board policy decision to be made. However, that would be consistent with how we budget across the general fund, for example, where we know that if we're thinking we're going to have a fund balance of $7 million, but it turns out we've got a fund balance of $5 million, that $2 million has to come from somewhere. Likewise, if we think we've got a fund balance of $7 million, but we've got a fund balance of $9 million in August, now we have $2 million more dollars. Again, a policy-level decision for the board, just throwing up there as food for thought. So this is the overall four-year general fund trend. Sorry. There we go. Having trouble with my mouse. Pardon me. Okay. So, in terms of taxes, this is where you see that increase, and it's not just the taxes we just discussed. Property taxes also are projected to increase, not as dramatically. Also, you see the increase here for licenses, permits, and franchise fees. This largely is related to fee studies that have been done. Of note, the Building Department fee study. Revenue from use of money or property, here's where you see our adjustments for what we anticipate will be the interest on our general fund. we have not budgeted this year anything in terms of revenue for our disaster budgets as it relates to the, I shouldn't say anything, but any additional general fund dollars for disaster budgets. So that includes the beautifier, et cetera. Some funds have been budgeted in the, in the roads disaster budgets, but not minor by comparison with the $2 million over that we budgeted last fiscal year for beaut, if you'll recall. And then operating transfers in is primarily comprised of not transferring in the $3.9 million of CARES Act funding that had been residing in a special revenue fund, as well as no transfers in budgeted for the fire JPA, if you'll recall that we had included in the adopted budget last year. And the teeter transfer to balance is less this year than it was last year, and after taking account of those things, you're basically static, or status quo. On the all-around, again, I note the difference between this number and this number, very close to the CARES Act funding that we absorbed into the general fund last year, or that we, revenue that we had last year. So taxes, of course, are largest revenue source. Operating transfers in, this number has gone up consistently over the years for a variety of reasons. Some of, you know, one of them is the teeter transfer to balance, another is our PG&E settlement funds that flow through general fund budgets, CARES Act funding, et cetera. That's where we see those. Were there any questions there?
I have a question. Contributions from other governments? Who are these other governments?
You know, I confess, I would have to check on that particular $28,200, but historically, these are things like, I think it was year before, last, or last year, there was $47,000 for an MOU that our Sheriff's Department had with the City of Angels Camp. There has been, there have been incidents where code compliance will actually do work for other entities, so that's where that, and I would have to confirm where that particular $28,000 resides.
Krista? On a small increase in property taxes, considering what's happening in the real estate market, I'm not sure what's happened the last tax collection. Is that?
So...
Not as small. I'm not sure what small is in relation to what's happening.
Oh, small, and, well, and I am not the authority here. I certainly defer to our assessor or auditor should they wish to jump in. However, there is a lag, as we know, with the rule, et cetera, and so what we see here is, I think, more consistent with past, and I know they're working very hard to get the rule cut up, and I think we'll start to see, as that happens, likely larger increases. But increases as a result of our current market, I think, are still premature as it relates to this budget. But again, that is, that is not a statement of, that is an educated guess. I defer to our auditor and our assessor.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the comparisons by major fund appropriations, we just went over, so general fund appropriations And part of the reason for that is the increase of fund balance, the increased revenue that we have, increases in our MOUs, ongoing salary progression, et cetera, increases in services and supplies. Also, we see a slight increase in public works. Integrated waste has gone down. The reason for that is because the cell is not currently budgeted as a capital improvement project in the amount that it was, which is about $2 million. If, when we look here at Health and Human Services, essentially flat. CAP is much higher, and this is a result of public works projects. And then others are more or less essentially... And then others are more or less essentially the same. So looking at the general fund expense trend for this period, services, salaries and benefits are up. This increase is basically consistent with what we would expect to see in terms of regular salary progression, promotions, et cetera. The services and supplies budget is substantially higher. There were a few areas in which we could see that. The Butte Fire, there is one remaining project that was budgeted this year that hasn't not been budgeted, or was not budgeted last year, that's 1.8, or almost 1.9 million dollars. The jail bed competency treatment program that the sheriff's department brought to your board and was approved is a major contract in the amount of, well, altogether, the delta's about a million, but the contract is larger than that. So that's a major driver. And then the third major driver is a project in the roads, or projects in the roads department to the tune of about 1.7 million dollars. So there is an increase there. Those are the, those are the reasons. So other charges, here's where we see $3.7 million that was budgeted last year in the Butte Fire operating budget, so that are no longer being, that was basically reimbursement to public works for work that was done by force account as it relates to fixing, or handling the Butte Fire projects. We see those funds have actually not in the general, sorry, correct. Those funds are no longer budgeted in the other charges area. Capital assets have gone down. Operating transfers out have gone up, and the reason for that, right, is mainly due to the building department and code compliance transferring more money in, or more money out, rather, to their special revenue funds. So in terms of the CAO criteria for recommendations, as it relates to personnel, fulfills the mandate, essential function, generates revenue, or net zero budget impacts. I want to make one crucial note here, which is that historically, at least in the last few years, there was a fifth, a fifth criterion, and that criterion was operational efficiency and organizational improvement, process improvement, basically. Many of the recommendations that you see today in the general fund would be that fifth driver, or criterion. The reason why it was dropped in this past budget cycle was because of the concerns regarding COVID and what our fiscal outlook was going to look like. But an argument can be made that that particular criterion is at least as important, if not more so, than the other ones on this list. So we'll expect to see with the, with the class and compensation study, that particular criterion to be addressed. However, some of the recommendations we'll discuss when we get to the position requests are being, are being made as it relates to that driver, because it's been certain positions so far out for such a long period that it does not seem prudent to wait at this point to adjust them. And they may still be further adjusted after the class and comp study. So, oh, let me go back, please. CIP, projects previously approved by the board, countywide projects that offer a substantial portion of departments' benefits, organizational improvement, think about the technological enhancements, or the D-8 building, infrastructure improvement, health, safety, and well-being, and legal mandates, many of which overlap. So for personnel, I believe that conversation we should have at the end of this presentation, or perhaps after lunch, there is a spreadsheet that we can go over at that time. What is not on the spreadsheet, so I note it here, is a request for an extra hire grant funded, grant funding and management position that would be in the admin office. Again, I'll talk about that when we get to the personnel requests, but wanted to note it here, since we're not technically requesting a position, just funding for an extra hire. The CIP projects and capital assets. We can get to those when we actually go through the book, if you'd like. So other recommendations that are included in the budget, Sheriff, Coroner, Investigatory Budget Unit. If you'll recall, at a recent study session, I recommended, and the board directed, that we investigate potentially combining the offices of the sheriff and the coroner. I note for the public and colleagues that that request came from the administrative, or suggestion came from the administrative office and direction from the board. In no way was this a request from the sheriff's department for this action to be taken. That said, due to the fact that while we still don't know whether your board will request that, an urgency, sorry, rather, that an ordinance be brought back to combine those two offices, should that happen, it would happen at some point between now and probably October at the latest, in order to get that ordinance on the books prior to when papers are filed for that office, so that we can have the proper office clearly being available for someone to file. So that being the case, both in terms of having some funding for investigation, but also having the ability, if that were to be the case, to have a budget unit, at least partially, in place so that the sheriff's department could make any preparations necessary, this budget unit is included. The capital asset that is included would not be approved, nor would a purchase order be issued for it unless that urgency ordinance were in place, or, pardon me, unless that ordinance had been amended, the offices combined, and clear direction were given from the board in terms of next steps. I reiterate, this is clearly, this is simply an investigatory budget unit at this point. And should your board determine not to combine those offices, the administrative office will work with the sheriff's department, who will obviously be on notice that no further expenditures should be made from this budget unit, and then it will revert back to the general fund.
Ms. Callaway.
Why are we buying a refrigeration unit for the sheriff? Is that for something other than bodies?
Well, if it were to be purchased, it would be further to your board determining that we were going to combine those offices, and I don't know that it would be for anything other than bodies. But it's not clear at this point, because it's so early in the process, that even if those offices were combined, that we would need a refrigeration unit. It may be possible to do the, both combine the offices, for example, and use our existing contractors to, for that service, or contractor for that service. So it's, it's not clear that we would need that in any event.
So under capital assets, it's in the, it's in there?
It is.
So it's in there based on the assumption that if we do combine, then we would need to purchase that?
Not as much as, that's part of the, that's part of it. I mean, we know that refrigeration is an issue that would, has to be addressed, whether via a contract or another refrigeration unit, for example. That said, what we're asking departments to do, and if you'll recall, when we were at mid-year budget, there was a lot of robust conversation with your board as it relates to not kicking cans down the road from recommended budget to final budget, and not kicking cans down the road at final budget to mid-year budget. And so when the budget instructions were released to departments, they were cognizant of that direction. And this is in addition to the fact that we know that if this ordinance is passed and the offices combined, the second part of 2020, sorry, pardon me, the first part of 2022 would need to be preparation for when that would happen. So it's really with a view to being conservative and to try to get everything into this budget that we know right now we might need to contemplate in the course of the next year.
Anything else, Ms. Callaway?
So the community organizations budget includes $50,000, which would be $10,000 per district. The idea here that we're there, and whether or not a public benefit finding might need to be made, but we are aware that there are, whether it's parks and rec, whether it's individual community organizations, some of which reside on county-owned property, we do know that there are entities and shareholders of ours that occasionally could use a bit of assistance from your board. This is, we would really probably need to make public benefit findings in many cases. But by the same token, I think, you know, COVID has elucidated for all of us the need from time to time for assistance. It is a complicated issue, certainly, $10,000 doesn't go very far. There could be far more requests of any one of you than we could ever possibly satisfy. So again, a policy level decision, but one recommendation that's being made based on feedback that I have had from a few, a few as it relates to different, different entities. So something for your consideration. Parks and rec funding has been budgeted at $400,000 of revenue and $400,000 of expenditures for Prop 68, further to the projects that were previously been brought to you but have not been fully fleshed out. If that funding is not locked in, then these, this will not matter. Nothing will be expended unless we are assured that the grant will, is secured. So debt service. Would anyone like to go over this slide carefully? Anyone? On the all-around, it's up, but not by a lot, and it has to do with the HVAC. Thanks. I'm mindful of the time.
Ms. Callaway.
If we, we borrowed money from the RIM, it was a loan, so we need to pay that back?
Yes.
Is that, with that, it's not a, it's not a bond or a COP?
Yeah.
Would that not be?
It's not, so that's internal borrowing, and where we see it hit is with our fund balance, because it hits our fund balance as a liability. But it's not, and we will owe the pooled money interest rate on those loans to the RIM Fund, but it's not the same, it's not reflected the same as the, this.
Thank you.
So teeter, as of 6:30 of this year, projected fund balance of 7.2. You'll see our annual general fund contribution of half a million dollars, teeter transfer to balance of 3.9, and 2.4 million going primarily into capital improvement projects, and also a couple of, of budget units for particular projects. The estimated fund balance, or, sorry, the estimated revenue is 800,000. I believe that figure likely to be low. And the estimated fund balance as of next June 30th, 2022, at 1.15. And the reason why contingencies is exactly at 2% as opposed to perhaps higher, we could have recommended budgeting the entire teeter transfer, which would have left contingencies somewhere around 2.8. But if you'll recall, this time last year, or adopted budget last year, a direction was given to move funds out of the general fund reserve and leave a fund balance in teeter, and so consistent with that prior board direction, and we have done the same So in terms of the structural deficit, we essentially spoke about this earlier when we talked about our year-over-year fund balance reductions. So this year, the good news is we're up, but contingencies went down in part because of increased expenses and in part because of a reduced teeter transfer. We've seen historically these 3.2, 3.3 million dollar reductions in terms of year-over-year fund balance. We've seen now for the third year, we are going in the right direction, but again, I note that our contingencies are at least this year down over last year. And this budget also includes a 5.3% reduction that we talked about from last year. So all of those are indicators that we have more projected expenditures than we have revenues. And this is an ongoing issue that we will need to address. So just to put it in a different visual, so when we think about it at a very high level, what our structural deficit looks like, you're looking at your revenues, your expenses, then you take out your fund balance and the teeter transfer. Because if revenues and expenses matched, then these would, the funds would all still be essentially in our savings account. And then contingencies, which is booked as an expense despite the fact that it's actually savings, and what you come to is this number, so 9.4. Last year's deficit, which again, if you add the 3.9 to this figure, for the CARES Act funding is essentially exactly the same as this year. And then the prior year was even higher. So you can see the outlier here of the CARES Act funding, and where we're really running, which is around 9 to 10 million in terms of revenues being short of projected expenses. So options for future consideration for revenue, we can always look to expand our contract services, we could present a sales tax increase to the voters, we can continue to look at fee studies, I know this has been occurring and will continue to occur, and your board could consider expanding the cannabis program.
I'll add one to that. Getting the role of assessor's office caught up.
Ah, perfect. Thank you.
That is the lion's portion of our revenue.
That is correct. So.
Ms. Callaway did have a very good point earlier with the housing market, the way it is right now would benefit us ultimately. If it went the other way, not so much.
So.
Those revenues come down. Yeah, when that bubble pops off, that will be scary, Gary. You've dealt with that before, so.
Options for future consideration in terms of expenditures, we could reduce non-mandatory services. As we know, economic development, library, PATV, and the museum are not mandated services, although that is not to say that they are not important to, to the county. We could revisit the TOT methodology, we spoke of that earlier. We spoke of that earlier. And we could revisit county contributions.
If you could give me an explanation on revisiting the TOT methodology, what do you mean by that?
So the transient occupancy tax is a general tax, which by definition means that they are general fund dollars. That character cannot be changed. Were they to be special revenue dollars, and then it would have needed to be a special tax. So your board can in fact change the 25, 25, 25 allocation that currently is in place, or it may not and may continue to apply that methodology in this budget cycle and in future budget cycles. However, it is ongoing general fund revenue.
The final one's county contributions?
So salary and benefit-related reductions, obviously, we're going into collective bargaining. There are all sorts of, you can see them. We've been very conservative in terms of adding positions in the last year. You will see budget, you will see recommendations to add some positions in this budget. That said, we will be entering negotiations, and so there is a question mark there in terms of how that will affect our bottom line going forward. And just thank yous to your board, the auditor controller, IT, admin staff, which I know has done just an unbelievable job considering. We've got a new team that is really knocking it out of the park, and I just can't thank them enough. Summer, Jamie, and Denise, really, thank you. Thanks, everyone, including HR, department heads, and fiscal staff. I don't have to remind any of one. This has been an incredibly challenging 15 months. Budget is never easy, but this is two years in a row of asking for budgets to be lean, and departments have absolutely stepped up and done what we asked. So for that, I am really incredibly grateful and would like that, like everyone to know it. So we're a little past noon here, but just to finish off with the recommendation, we move forward with the hearing, provide direction on any changes you might like to see in the budget in September, adopt on June 22 the budget, the capital assets resolution, the other resolutions, and then conduct a study session in August or late July, late July perhaps as it relates to the American Rescue Plan funding, and August after the fiscal year-end books are closed, and then bring back the adjustments to the adopted budget in September. And with that, I'll take any questions, or Mr. Chair, if you'd like to break.
Providing there's no hot questions for the moment, I would like to take lunch break. Ms. Callaway, do you have something before we do take break? Is everyone fine with taking lunch and processing this and coming back? Don't hear any complaints? Then that's what we'll do. We'll return at?
1:35.
2.
That's one.
1:30. Thank you for the presentation earlier, Krista. Do you want to open up? Go ahead, and we'll move on to the discussion. Ask if there's any questions.
Indeed. Just work on sharing my screen here.
I think with the process, we'll move forward on the general budget, and we'll bring the positions and salaries forward at the end. Are you okay with me?
Yeah, that's just fine. Perhaps we should look at those. My recommendation is that after answering any questions your board might have as it relates to the presentation, then to the extent that any of you, and we could kind of start at the beginning with the administrative office budget, if you have a question on any particular budget unit, let me know. If not, we will skip it. And to your point, Supervisor Toffenelli, when we get to the capital improvements budget, then perhaps is a good time to speak about those projects. Does that work?
Thank you.
So were there questions on the presentation itself?
I'm not hearing any questions at this time. Ms. Feldorff, you good to move forward?
Yes.
Okay. So where do you want to start here? We can go?
So if we were to start?
Administration.
Are there any questions on the administrative office budget units?
You know, this is, to the point, I would like to add to the discussion at the end of the meeting, Assistant CAO, I would like to add to that discussion, but that's, that would be the positions and salaries that we're discussing at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Is anyone opposed to adding that to the list at the end of the meeting? Okay, so we'll add that to the end meeting, Krista. Board members. Shall I give you a moment? Ms. Callaway.
What order did you want to go in? Did you want to go by department, or if I have a question on something else, which isn't?
If it's a general question that flows from the presentation, then I'm happy to take that now. Otherwise, and I'm happy to entertain any question now, but it might be easiest if we go through administration and then, for example, if no one has a question on the airport, just move forward until we get to another budget unit where there's a question. But that's, if you would prefer, we do it differently, we certainly can.
Whatever system y'all want is just fine. I'll wait till my.
No, I think that we can go down the list, and if somebody has a question to that, then we can, we can address that. If there's no one that has a question, then we'll move on to the next one. I guess we should go in order that way. You know, I don't, I mean, there's a lot here, but I don't think everyone has questions on everything here. Okay, so let me start with the airport, because we just talked about administration, unless somebody else had a question on administration. If anybody has a question on the airport? I'm going to move on to the assessor's office after the airport. I have one for the assessor's office, and I did call you about it, the RFP. How are we proceeding with that? Is that in the budget book? Where is it at? And how are we working for on that RFP? Because as we discussed earlier, that could be a point of more.
Absolutely understood.
Income, not income, but.
Revenue generating activities flow from the assessor's office, absolutely. And so as Assessor Davis, myself, and HR Director Hawkins discussed with your board recently, there is both a, an RFP that we would look to and are in the process of putting together with the assessor's office to go out and see if we can find an external consultant to help bring the role into compliance. Along with that, on a parallel track, not in place of it, is that the assessor is working with other counties, one in particular, to see whether it's possible to bring in and staff, senior staff from those counties to do training and also facilitate in getting the role caught up. So there is some precedent for that, as I understand, the assessor's office, and welcome for her to jump in here, or our HR director, if they would like to correct me or interject, but there has been precedent where the RAssessor has brought in staff from other counties to help train in the past. So a two-track system. We are not yet done with the RFP, but it is in the works. Deputy CAO Nakataro is working on it and has been. As we come to the culmination of this part of the budget process, that will be one of the top priorities for the administrative office and has been. In terms of the actual budget, so let me, you'll note that there is very little, let me just confirm here. Right. So very little salary savings has been budgeted in this budget unit. In addition to that, and I know that there are other potential uses slated, but there is $160,000 in services and supplies, as well as other funds in this budget unit that may or may not be used for other budgeted purposes. Between those two things, and understanding that we typically experience a lot of salary savings in the hundreds, $300,000 to $400,000 range, there should be more than sufficient appropriations in this budget unit to cover the cost of an RFP or the subsequent contract.
Any further questions on the assessors?
I do.
Yes, Ms. Feldorff.
I think it might cover a couple departments, but it was highlighted under the assessor's office for the remodel or reorg of the office. I know we spoke about it. It seems that that seems, at least on that floor, is that something that we could consider at a broader scale on that floor rather than just one office, recognizing that there could be some one main front desk for multiple, and then from a safety, a safety and face planning approach on that floor with folks in the tax assessments?
Certainly. I think that's absolutely something, and in fact, might be something the Strategic Planning and Financing Committee would want to look at. That's determination for your board to make. We'll have another opportunity to speak more in depth about the capital improvement project requests that are in the budget when we get to the CIP portion. But certainly, that is, that is, your board's certainly fair for us to discuss. Just as a side note, it's been an interesting time when we received your direction to form and have since formed both the ad hoc committee for jail repairs and animal services and the Strategic Planning and Financing Committee, the Standing Brown Act Committee. We have, we have moved those forward, and we are definitely engaged in the process. We're looking at our next Strategic Planning and Financing Committee meeting on the 21st. So, but in terms of timing and incorporating and getting any firm recommendations from those committees, and then my being able to then incorporate them into this budget, because of that timing, there's been a certain, I have done my best to interpret where I thought there were opportunities that were consistent with board direction and the discussions we've had in those committees, but they are both in their infancy, and so these recommendations are not yet fully vetted with either of them. So just as a kind of a baseline background floor for that, so that everyone is on the same page when we have these discussions, it's totally the prerogative of your board to direct me in terms of how to take next steps.
Mr. Garamendi.
Thank you. Kind of my, my questions are kind of editorial, but just sort of of note, I don't like the term succession planning when you have an elected official. Voters do succession planning. It's just an editorial comment that I would hope lands somewhere.
Understood.
Who do we have? You know, we also had a long discussion about the assessor's office, and I didn't think we came to a conclusion as a board. We obviously have a budget here, and as Krista has pointed out, we can adjust that, but all the changes, so many of these changes are different than what we discussed. They're all going to be codified here in personnel and the budget. And so it's sort of a, a budget is not a backlog, but it's just a different way of going about that. I don't know if I'm comfortable with the reorganization, but I'm comfortable in allocating a budget and then choosing, and then helping come up with a solution of how we're going to be more productive and get some things done in that office. So like I said, so there in the broad sense, I'm okay with it. Personnel changes, I hope we have a robust conversation. For example, I don't understand who's handling the outside catch for GIS work. Seen other places that, I just don't know who's going to do that work. Is it important? I've always been told it was super important. Maybe it's not as important today as it was in prior budgets. So those are the kind of questions I hope we could work out. I would rather not do that in the budget, because we're allocating a chunk of money as a holder, and then we could go through that organization. I don't know where the rest of the board sits.
So on that note, particularly as it relates to the assessor's office, but, and again, totally for your board to direct in terms of how we move through this conversation, but one of our supervisors will need to sit out for a portion of that assessor conversation as it relates to personnel. And for that and other reasons, we're thinking of taking the personnel requests at the end after we discuss the budgets as a whole. Would that work and address?
That would totally work for what I, what I'd like to talk, yes, absolutely. Another question I've got is, under professional and specialized services, we had $157,000 last year budget and $160,000 this year. Is that a contract that's catching us up?
I invite Ms. Davis to jump in here. I'm trying to pull it up in OpenGov, although I do believe that that is.
Page 120, 5271.
Yeah.
That helps.
Yeah, it's the 160, I think, for this year.
120 of the fat book.
Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The answer to the last question, which is, is the $160,000 in professional and specialized services catching us up? The answer is no. That particular line item includes state mandated audits that we contract out to other counties, as well as a line item for our scanning project so that we can protect the files and. files and, and digitize them so that we can work more efficiently if this pandemic continues or we have another similar type of incident, or if another wildfire actually gets closer to government center and takes it out. I can answer other questions that have been asked before this, but that one seems, seemed like one that needed an immediate response.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, is this going to be, is it going to be 100, is this one-time expense or is this an ongoing expense that we'll see year over year?
A portion of it is ongoing year over year. Approximately 10,000 of that is ongoing year after year. The balance is a one-time expense for the scanning project, as I discussed with the CAO. It also requires that we will bring in some extra higher student interns, I would hope, who would be able to help us with purging the files so that we don't pay to scan obsolete documents.
So is the, do we, do we, do we spend that $157,000 last year on this? Is this a $300,000 project? Or is this?
No, we did not spend anything on it. It has carried over for a couple of years with a, with a contribution from Teter to cover it since it's computer-related.
Anything further, Mr. Garamendi? Not this time?
Not this time.
Ms. Coway? No? Mr., oh, Ms. Feldorff?
On page 116, 4721, the grant, can you explain more about that? I noticed it says we have not met the minimum requirement of the grant. So what does that mean? Is the county on the hook or what? Are we able to allocate that funding to something this fiscal year or this upcoming fiscal year? Or are we going to have to pay it back?
Okay. At this point, I have left all of the remaining grant funds untouched for the 2021, '22 fiscal year. And the reason for that is if we have a problem with the Department of Finance, I'm hopeful it, it will be limited by the funds that we have remaining. So none of it is being budgeted on the off chance that DOF gets a little testy. However, last week, we got some fairly good news after some active interactions with the legislative, with the legislature's Assembly Budget Committee and the Senate Budget and Review Committee. Both of those committees have approved the California Assessors Association proposal to continue the grant at a much higher rate with a much lower county match. And so I'm hopeful as a result of the work that we've been doing with Department of Finance and the state, that we will be able to work through this. I also believe, based on conversations I've had with Department of Finance, that they might be reasonable about it, but they, honestly, they're a little miffed because I chaired the committee that went around their back to the legislature when we couldn't get through DOF. So I'm hopeful we're going to actually get more grant money and that I will be able to use some of those funds for this scanning project, for the staff to come in and help purge the file. And I'm also hopeful in partial answer, just to repeat, that the exposure we may have will be limited to the amount that is sitting in the grant fund right now. In other words, we've expended some of it. I expect the, the balance at year end to be about 375 to 400,000. If the Department of Finance gets testy with us, I think we can limit our exposure to what we have to give back to them.
I'm still concerned about the sentence of we have not met the minimum requirement. So what, and this is a hypothetical, are they going to even consider us to get more grant funding if we haven't even met the minimum requirement, either the current grant cycle?
I don't think so. I don't think we have that problem, let's say that. We have been able to show a return on investment that that Department of Finance is reasonably okay with. Our difficulty, as I've explained to your board, is in actually hiring the staff who were targeted for hiring with that grant money. So we have not been able to hire the staff that we said we would hire. We have not been able to complete the scanning project, and that is where they have the problem. But to the extent that we have had expenses, those, those revenues have had about a 300% return on investment, and that's how we're keeping this sort of temp down in terms of concerns on their side.
Okay, thank you.
So at this time, we're going to move on past the assessor's office.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may say so.
Yes.
We've got a long ways to go here.
Right.
We have three fire chiefs sitting here. Is there any possible way we could get them to come up in what they're here for? I believe it's 172 and.
Yeah.
TOT tax. And then they, I mean, maybe till tomorrow that we get to that.
I concur, yeah. Very good point taken, Mr. Toffnelli. Gentlemen, can you come up and say your piece and see where we want to go from there? And then we'll move on from there and possibly, since we've been blessed to have DA Yook in here, that we can possibly move on to hers next. You, you okay? Okay. So we'll start with the fire chiefs.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Toffnelli.
I have to turn your mic off. So I have to have that mic up so high that it has feedback with the one on the table. So I should, there you go. Sorry about that.
The analysis that I've just handed out to you is, to give you an idea of the impact of the 25% that we get for TOT and the 10% that we get from Prop 172, and when I say "we," I'm talking about the eight other fire districts, okay? Because every penny we get, as a whole, we have to divide nine ways. And what I did was indicate how much money we have been allocated as of April 30th. And you could see that the, each fire district received $20,768, which is a couple of thousand dollars over what we budgeted last year. But working with our CAO, she was kind enough to give me the information about how's it look for 2021, '22, because we need that information to budget for next year. And based on the dollars, the revenue that was collected already, the indication was that there was, there's another $895,000 that came in. That translates to $233,000 for the fire department, $233 for sheriff, $233 for roads, $233 for the visitors bureau. But when we divide our share up, that comes to $24,848. Now, we're not sure yet if we're going to get the rest of that money for this fiscal year, but for the next fiscal year, I'm here to ask you, how much can we count on for next year? So we're talking about $45,000 per district compared to $410,000 for the sheriff and $410,000 for the other three. When we look at Prop 172, we see a similar situation, the only difference being that we, the fire departments, each budgeted $14,250 for this year. So far, we've collected $18,700. That's great. Got an, and another 4,800 was collected so far this year-to-date that has not yet been allocated to any of the fire departments. So the question is, are we going to get the rest of that money as well? And I want to just give you an example of how important $18,000 is to our fire districts, Right now.
Just one moment. Ms. Feldorff, while he's talking, can you please mute your thing so we don't get the feedback?
Okay.
That, that'll solve it. My apologies for interrupting.
No problem. Last year and this year, we put paramedics on Lake Tullock Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, every single weekend from Memorial Day to Labor Day. That was an unbudgeted item last year, and we're doing it again this year. Paramedic is on the lake for 12 hours with the sheriff. We had to train them in water rescue for paramedics. We had to buy them uniforms and equipment for being out in the sun all day on a boat. Plus, these are per diem paramedics. We pay them $25 an hour. Well, they don't always show up. If they don't show up, I have to have a full-time captain, paramedic, cover for them that day. His average hourly rate is $35, but because it's overtime, it's going to be time and a half. And that turns out to be a lot of money. So the cost for us is between $11,000 and $15,000 a season. And this is just one example for us. Every department has all these examples. So I'm really asking two things. One, can we count on 100% of the money you collect this year? And can we use that to budget for next year, 100% of the money you collect? That's it. Any questions?
I don't have any at this time. I think as we move forward with the budget, my personal perspective is as that money comes in and it's actual, that not going forward with projected, that I, from my perspective, those actuals of what we've collected are justifiably allocated. And I, I am, I, as one, I'm not speaking for the entire board, am comfortable moving forward and saying, as one, that that 25% should be allocated, that are actuals that we've collected, and should continue moving forward in that fashion. But I would leave that to the entire board to either agree with or disagree with, but I, for one, stand on that position.
I just want to make sure I understand what you just said, okay? You agree with the 25% allocation of all the money that's collected in this fiscal year to each, that goes to each particular group? In our case, the fire department?
Yes.
Good. Great.
I just want to, Mr. Chair, for me.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much for this. This is very good. You know, you understand the challenge that we face.
I do.
We set forward this budget and we, we play the over-under. So if, if we collect less money, we owe you that 25% that we budget. If we collect more money, you would get more, you know, you could see how we come in. So if we collect less TOT than we have budgeted, we're going to have to cover the difference. If we collect more, you want that difference. And so in many ways, you kind of got to choose your poison. Do you play and hope, bet on the come that we're going to make more money in the year? Or do you want that guaranteed? Bill, Ken, because otherwise, if we go on a fluctuate and we bet on the future, then we get to halfway point, our end of the year next year, and we don't have that money, you won't get that money.
I'm operating on one assumption, that when the board agreed to do this, to give us the 25% and to give us the 10%, it was our understanding that it was going to be 25% and 10% of the 100% that's collected. That was our good faith understanding.
Here's my point. We're, there's no, no one's arguing, I don't hear anybody up here arguing about the 25%. We're just saying, you know, do you want it both ways? You know, because sometimes we come in under and sometimes we come over. We're taking a shot, trying to put together a budget. And, you know, if we come in short, we're going to make it up. If we come in over, you want that, but you don't want to deal with the downside too. So if you want 100%, we could discuss that as a board, but you're, we are partners in that case, and you are gambling with us.
You know, if I had to choose, I can only speak for Copropolis, I'd go for that. I'd do the, I'd go the over-under. I'm prepared to do that. I would do that. And the reason I would do that is because all of my people, myself, we show up, we do the job. No matter, let me finish. No matter how much money we have in our budgets, okay? It's like the paramedics on the lake. We don't have budget for that. We're going to find it somewhere. We'll find it somewhere. We might cut buying new hoses.
That's what you think I'm arguing with you, but I'm not.
Yeah, well, I'm giving you the answer. We'll take the over-under. I will.
That's, Jack, that's how, that's how I interpreted what he said. So whatever's collected, we just want the 25%.
I just want to make sure that they understand the risk.
Yeah.
That they're in. Because if everything goes to crap this year and the economy falls out, you're going to get short playing that game. If the economy stays strong, you know, you could win, but there's a, there's a gamble to this.
I would like Krista to, she can, she can say it in better words than I did earlier. We discussed this in depth. I think she can articulate in a good way that I think we can all agree on.
Can I say?
One, no, you can wait one minute, Chief. I appreciate it. But she's, she's going to articulate it better than I could, and I, and I appreciate it.
So one approach for your board to consider that may be amenable to, to our chiefs would be to do a look pack proposal such that when we get, and I tried to hit on this earlier, although perhaps it wasn't entirely clear, but, so for example, now the numbers that are in the budget are the numbers that are based on information we had at that time about year-to-date actuals. And so in this case, as opposed to some of our other revenue streams and balances, we expect that number to go up between now and June 30, when we get to closing the year-end books. So the idea would be, and is, or the proposition, that we budget at recommended based on what we understand to be actuals for the current fiscal year. We true that up at final budget, again, based on what we know to have been the actuals as of 6/30 for this current fiscal year, and that that is how it works. And so addressing the concern that fire departments to receive 100% of what that 25% allocation would, that's awkward, the entire 25% allocation for this current fiscal year, and then pending board direction, we would be having a similar conversation this time next year based on what next fiscal year's actuals are and at both recommended and final budget, if you see my point, which would then address the concern of the fire districts getting the full 25% allocation, but alleviate the concern of the over-under because it would be a situation based on actuals. The risk, I mean, it's got less risk in terms of a question mark, a little bit more in terms of, you know, what happens if next year is a bad fiscal year, revenue year, because then that was our strategy going in, but that's, that's the question before you.
Krista, when we do this, when do we distribute the money to the fire districts?
I defer to the auditor controller, but on a quarterly basis, I believe.
On a quarterly basis.
Ms. Gomes, please correct me if I'm wrong.
So we're talking about, we'll go on arrears for this year is what you're suggesting. And going forward, we're doing a quarterly payout based upon. And going forward, we're doing a quarterly payout based upon real-time tax info, correct?
Actually, the proposition is that we would go in arrears, so this, this coming '21, '22, once we have that final number in August, if your board approves it in September, then the fire departments would know, or districts would know, that on or about sometime in October for the quarter ended 9/30, they're going to get $400,000 or $450, whatever that final number is for this current fiscal year in August, they'll just get four quarterly payments that comprise that amount over the course of next fiscal year. Then if this strategy were to be adopted and maintained by the board, this time next fiscal year, we'll be talking about the year-to-date actuals of next fiscal year and then doing a true-up at that budget. And so the departments would always know, barring something totally unprecedented or unforeseen, that, because of course, your board can always change its direction, but, but the, the thinking would be that the fire departments would know what their allocation was going to be based on the prior-year actuals.
Can I just add one thing to that?
Was that clear?
In, in, for 2019, for, I'm sorry, for, yeah, for 2018, '19, we budgeted $28,000. In 2019, '20, we budgeted $33,000. That's based on actuals. And for 2019, '20, based on actuals, $40,885. But for 2021, for this year, we only budgeted $18,000 because we saw what was going on with COVID. We forecasted even though there was going to be, you know, even though we're now getting 12% instead of 6%, we just didn't see a lot of people coming up to town. We really didn't anticipate the kinds of people that would be coming up, the amount of people that actually did come up just to get away from their homes, you know? So we got lucky. But the, the important thing here is we're realistic when we allocate. You know, we sit around a room, the nine of us, and we decide, this is what we can live with because this is the right thing to do based on our ability to forecast.
And with that said, I just wanted to say my two cents. Thank you. I thought coming here, I might have to fight for the 25%. I was on the original committee with Kathy Galliano, and me and my wife went to the fair. We advocated, my fire engine was on the flyer. We were all in. So I appreciate what you're doing, but I also want you to understand that I have to do the same thing that you do. I have a board of nine directors. I have an auditor. I have to come up with a preliminary budget, and I just speculate what my budget's going to be. And then in September, I have to take a look at it again. I got to report to my auditor, and it goes to highs and lows. We understand with the economy, and I'm good with what you talked about. I understand that it's not always going to be high, and nothing in my budget is guaranteed. What I've learned from my auditor, Marvin, he's been very good with me, understand, Rich, it's just paper. It's paper. And if you can get your board to understand that, you're going to live the highs and lows. So with that said, I understand it. I just want to try to be upfront, transparent, to argue for what we did several years ago when I put my time with my wife and trying to get us where we needed to go, but I also understand it, and I appreciate you for advocating for us. Because the governor, it's awesome. He's taken care of California Division of Forestry. It's amazing. I wish I had that, but I don't. I have to go to my community, and I have to get a tax measure, which unfortunately for us, we have been unsuccessful over the years. So every little penny counts, and I just appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chief. I'm by no means advocating that we don't pay. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on, on how this bet's going to go. And does that mean, if we're going to play this, does that mean we're going to withhold the last quarterly payment so we come up with a true-up? I mean, there's just a lot, there's a lot of moving parts for what you're proposing, Chief, and you could lose.
It's okay.
And we can guarantee a win.
Here, let me just say one thing.
I just don't want me having this conversation next year and saying, Chief, you're not getting your last quarterly payment because of TOT.
No, I think you're holding it off, right? Because I don't think you've finally decided whether we'll get it or not.
Okay, what part?
The amount you're holding back.
This all boils down to midterm a couple of months ago when we did that, and it was said that we were in excess $800,000 in TOT. We didn't distribute that. It was voted on by this board to not do anything with it, put it in contingencies. That's what's driving this whole thing, and they're saying this time, are we going to get the 25%, whether it's low, or whether it's high, or at midterm, are you guys going to say no, or in excess of what we forecasted, we're going to keep it? They, they just want to know, and I'm in favor of getting the 25%. I was back then. That's what we agreed to do, and, and so I think that's exactly what they're asking because of what happened at midterm.
I'm, I'm in support of that. I mean, we're looking at $29,000 change per, I mean, I'd have no problem coming up this year. I'm trying to think out in the future for what it's going to be next year. We know we've got this year, and yeah, we're in good shape. I just want to make sure that if the fire departments are good with that and we come up with a way to do it, that's fine, but-
I don't think the fire department's going to have a problem with that. If we get 100% of everything that's collected, we're prepared to take the good with the bad. I, I'm speaking for myself. I'm speculating on what the other departments do.
You're correct, Joe.
There you go. And just one other thing, one other point. I've only been with the fire service now for five years. Prior to that, I was in the private sector. I never experienced anything like a second chance, okay? You do your budget, your budget's done, you got to live by it. Plus or minus 2%, you're okay. Plus or minus 3% or more, you got a problem, okay? The first time they told me, eh, it doesn't really matter how much you budget, we get to fix it in September, okay? That to me is alien, and till this day, I insist that everybody in my department, all of the chiefs, I mean, all of the captains, all of the department heads, give me their best-case scenario two ways. I want two numbers. I want to know what you need, and I want to know what you want. And until I look at the whole budget, look at the whole bottom line, and I see if I'm going to be negative or not, we make the cuts we need to cut, okay? If we're sitting here forecasting that we're only going to get $15,000 for a particular, you know, for TOT when we were counting on $25,000, $30,000 because we forecasted the $15,000. We knew what was going on, so it's not a big deal. But if we expect and forecast $40,000 and we only get $20,000, now I'm hurting. I'm hurting, okay? What I'm telling you is, we live within our means. That's the key. We live within our means, we make it happen, whatever has to happen, we make it happen. If we're over-budget in a particular area, there are things that we don't have to buy. For last year, I had engines out, I think, at least 16 weeks out of the year. I had one engine out, cost me $32,000 to fix it, you know? But those are unanticipated expenses, but when we have them, we've got to cut in other areas, and that's what we do. So I, yes, I'm saying, I think we're, we're all prepared to play that game because that's the way we budget, that's the way we forecast.
Okay, then, and if we're going in arrears, we need to come up with, by your numbers, $266,920 to get to that mark, correct?
Say that again, I want to make sure I understand.
$66,920?
If I may, Supervisor Garamendi, that's actually rolled up in the number that's in the current budget. So we would be trueing up for whichever, whatever TOT funds are received over and above that amount between now and June, or March 31st and June 30.
And that's exactly what she was talking about when we're saying, we come back with the final budget and come up with the actuals for those.
Then we'll know what that number is exactly.
We'll know what that is.
So we increase it by 50,000 or 100, or whatever the case may be at that point, and then they'll get four equal installments in the next fiscal year, and we'll go through the same process again next year, should the board direct that to be the methodology.
We hope we get 40 of them payments, right? We're not going to take money out of their book. I don't know. I'll have to see how you write this whole thing up. Personally, I'm not a gambler, so, good luck.
It's, it's alien to me also.
We're supporting you. We're going to support you. I just, I don't know if I'd take that gamble, but-
Right.
Who do we need, three out of five?
So are we all in favor on true-up on, on 25% TOT at this time? Gary's a yes. Ms. Callaway's a yes.
I'm a yes.
Me, yes.
Looks like we got five yeses on true-up on actuals.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
On TOT?
Yeah, on TOT.
On TOT, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we want to talk about Prop 172 or not?
Well, if you want to talk about it, you're here, so.
It's the same concept. It's the same thing. You know, we budgeted $14,250. Counties already collected $18,700, and that's through April, I believe. I'm sure people have been buying stuff over the last three months, April, May, June, you know? It's a busy time. Are we going to get that money too? Same concept, same principle, same arguments.
Unless Ms. Valmotta has any comments to that. Gary?
I have.
Yes? Ms. Callaway?
10%.
10%? I'm a yes, 10%?
Yes.
Yes, 10%? Yes, 10%?
Sounds like a plan. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You guys have a good day. We appreciate everything you do for the community.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
Just as a point of clarification on Prop 172, we did bring a mid-year adjustment that your board had approved, and that same true-up was already in the works to be made before June 30 or just after June 30, so there's no actual issue there.
Okay.
Sure, just one quick clarification. So just so we're clear, that $266,000, we've already rolled that up in there, right? In the budget?
Yes.
We don't have to come up with $266,000. It's already in.
The 200, and it's 410 altogether what's in there.
The difference?
The $223,000 is already budgeted to be distributed. What we would be adding to that is just the delta between whatever was incurred as of that date and what's incurred once we get the final finals in, in August.
Okay.
And we can true it up and start from the beginning on July 1st.
Indeed.
Okay. Got to be clean.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't painful. I'm glad we're all on the same page, to tell you the truth. Okay, so right now, we got them, them out. The DA says she can wait. Thank you, Ms. York. We'll move on to the auditor controller, and does anybody have any questions? If there's no questions or nothing from the auditor controller, we'll move on to building. Any questions on building or any statements from the building official? There, that's a negative, so cannabis. Any questions on cannabis or anything? Yes, sir.
I do have a question. Yes, I had a talk with Krista on, you go to county funds overview, and I think it needs to be corrected.
Give me a, give me a clearer page.
I'm going to page 40.
Page 40. Budget overview. Thank you. Page 40. Page 40.
40. Under cannabis regulations, third column over, general fund contributions. It says here that we have a general fund contribution of $66,241.
Yes.
And are we actually using general fund dollars to keep the cannabis system alive?
No, that's an error that will be corrected at final budget.
That will be corrected at final budget. Okay, thank you.
Good catch, Mr. Toffenelli.
Page 40.
You're, you're saying it's sustaining itself, Krista?
Yes, indeed.
Very good. Hopefully get to the point where it's more than that. Is there any further questions or statements on cannabis? With that, we'll move on to capital improvement projects. Ms. Callaway and Mr. Toffenelli, anything on capital improvement? Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, I, I do. I want to make a point in the animal services facility at the very bottom. We're committing $600K for this, for this year, and at this point, we don't even have a drawing, we don't have anything to build this building, but we're committing money to it, and I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying, the, the committee has not brought anything back to this board for approval on either a architectural hiring of an architect or an engineer or what type of building. If we buy a pre-engineered metal building and put it up, we have not come back to the board. We plan on coming back as soon as possible, but right now, it's saying 2.1 million over three years. I don't, I can't say that's correct because I don't, we don't have, I don't know what we're building. But we are putting aside 600, whether we spend that $600,000 this year to get to a shell of a building or not going forward. I, I hope we get to that point, but at this point, the, the committee hasn't got anything bringing back to the board, so I just want to make that-
Is that a placeholder on the $600,000 for the time being, providing that, you know, our ad hoc committee is able to come up with something to bring before the board so that we can move forward? And then whatever gets done of that?
So that is a rough estimate for what a shell would be. This was, and Supervisor Toffenelli is quite correct, no official recommendations have yet been made. However, we have had two or three meetings, including animal services on two occasions regarding, actually, three meetings, animal services on two occasions to discuss this with our facilities manager, and have multiple estimates that, three, I believe, that indicate that $600,000 would be an approximate number for getting a shell in place. The idea would be to do it over a three-year window, but again, Supervisor Toffenelli is quite correct, this has not yet been fully worked out. However, and, well, I also note that safe for, and I would be happy to bring anything related to this project back to your board, but certainly any, any project, a project of this magnitude would need to go to bid, would need to come back to board in order for those contracts to be approved. So while it's not necessarily ideal to placeholder budget, so to speak, I would say this is a hybrid of that, and that for, considering this has been a project so long in the works, I did move forward with the recommendation to allocate that $600,000 from certificates of participation, one of the named, appropriate uses for which is in fact an animal shelter. So, but clearly up to your board to give direction on that.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, and if we're done, if we're done with that, any other questions on that item?
Uh, no, go ahead.
Okay. The other item that's not on here that hopefully will appear in our final budget is the DA's office that we've committed to also as a board. The, the reason it's not on here is because we're going through the justice funds with getting MOU in place for those funds, so we know exactly what funds we're going to have available through that and what other COP or what other funds we can go forward with for it. But at least those monies will be on here, and that project will be on here because it has been a priority to this board.
I agree 100% Mr. Toffenelli. We've took vast steps to demolition the old, the old jail. We have a place for the DA's facility, and yes, we are going through the MOU with the courts so that we can properly allocate that money in a legitimate, legitimate manner. So, yeah, hopefully we can move that forward to the final budget, whether or not- Whether or not, you know, the plans and everything culminate this year or the following fiscal year will be somewhat in the same area as animal services. Are we all in agreement, Mr. Toffenelli, yes, for final budget on DA facility?
Yes.
Ms.?
It provided the MOU sign.
Right, providing the MOU.
And we know the amount of funds that we can put in.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Ms. Callaway?
If the MOU is signed.
Okay, I'm a yes if the MOU is signed. Mr. Geremindi?
I mean, yes, but I want to make sure that this money doesn't just sit in the account. I want it allocated, find out that there's some of it's going to go in planning immediately, so we could draw that up.
Yes.
Yes.
I concur.
I think that was.
Ms. Volbord? Okay.
I think that was part of our ad hoc committee that we were on. That was the plan, and I think it still is.
Great, we just need, and I want to just add, Mr. Chair, that on the animal services, I want to make sure that, I like the idea of it being a savings account. Still, we have the money to make the investment. We should make it. But we have to spend some of that and get some plans drawn. And I have great faith in Supervisor Toffenelli and Callaway to adhere on that.
I concur. I mean, the sooner we start building things, the sooner we don't have to pay $300 per sheet of half-inch plywood, so.
Also, if I might, Ms. Volbord.
At some point, it looks like it's going that way, so. You know, our buildings keep getting smaller with time, so.
Mr. Chair, one other item. From reading the HHSA allocation, the public health office relocation is on hold, so that should be removed from the CIP, yes?
Yes, there is a timing issue there. As you know, those leases are not moving forward at this time unless something changes. Then, when this comes back for final adoption in September, that line item will be removed.
This is your main tool, and I hope we're going to talk about sometime this month, about the philosophy of this board, on campus, off campus. We need to make a choice so we could do all the work we're working on.
True.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on capital improvement projects?
I have.
Mr. Geremindi? I mean, sorry, Mr. Toffenelli. I'm sorry, I'm going back.
You pulled a Marita.
Mr. Toffenelli?
There's, I think, three items on here that have to do with the jail. But none of those items are what the ad hoc committee was put in place for. None of these are any of the structural deficits that we talked about that were done during construction. The HVACs are not part of that, which I'm surprised to see on here. The laundry, I do have a question for Patrick because they possibly could, but I don't think those particular things are. I think the dryers are the ones that are affected. This says the life of the equipment, which could mean it's through its cycle. But we still have those, that project, once we get the ad hoc committee back and determine what we're going to do, it could appear on here, and I don't know if it'll appear on here by September or not, but we'll work towards getting that on here and looking at it and what direction we're going to take when we come back to the board on it. But none of these jail items are part of that. They're all separate issues from that.
Gary, do you have any?
Turned it off. You turned it off.
I'm sorry. Can you have any, I mean, we got $1.16 million on this list. Do you have any idea?
I don't have a ballpark estimate. You know, our next meeting on this issue is, Patrick is supposed to be putting together all the outstanding items that are left that hadn't been taken care of. And once we get that in our next meeting, we'll have more of a ballpark figure of what we're looking at and how we're going to move forward on it. Whether we're going to take care of it and then go down the line of what we need to do, or are we going to go and meet with the vendors and contractors and find out whether we're going to, they're going to help pay for it or what. But that'll be probably their next meeting.
These items that are listed here, you and Marina know the jail by our name, right? Not from the inside, but from the other side. But they all seem correct to you?
Many nights she spent there. As a part of her sale.
Thank you.
But I just wanted to point that out.
All right.
I have one question. The top item, 5635, would that be, that dollar amount be reconsidered of my comment earlier?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Thank you for following up.
Verifying, verifying, verifying. Okay, thank you.
Right, because it's one item in the assessor's office underneath $130,000 total, on the total amount. Am I correct? So that's $124,000 of the $130,000 for.
Are you talking about in the narrative?
Yeah.
We actually backed that out of the budget unit itself and then re-budgeted the request here in the capital improvements budget at the $124,000 figure. And yes, Supervisor Volbord, if this is a good time to talk about, if you want to discuss whether making a different assessment of whether to incorporate the spaces as opposed to not.
When you talk about, if I may, when you talk about the floor area that you're talking about, there's the tax collector that's in the middle of it, which would be probably part of your consideration. But the other side is the clerk's office, which I understand has already gone through this process in the not-too-distant past. Is that correct, Ms. Volbord? They've re.
I would need to, I would need to, yes, okay, yes.
Yes, so I think that half of the building's been taken care of more recently, so it would be.
Ms. Toffenelli, the only thing they did was put in the windows. They didn't reconfigure the office itself.
Yeah, they did.
Maybe I need to clarify my comment from earlier. What I always, what I was seeing was one, instead of going to multiple offices, you gain the hallway. You make one check-in at the beginning of the hallway, and then that way, if there was an emergency, they can lock down that one location, but then they gain more room because of office space by adding in the hallway area. And that's fine. If they don't want, it just, I, it just seems to make sense if you're going to redo that area. You gain more space by somehow utilizing the hallway space.
I understand what you're talking about. We're not talking about, what $124,000 does does not move walls by any means. It does cubicles in other areas. It does not move walls.
I know, but as Krista said, this was the conversation to have.
No, I understand.
Do you want to open it? Do we want to consider opening it more for discussion or just keep it limited to the cubicles? It's fine. I just, this is the time to talk about it. If it's not, it's just the cubicles, and we move on. Just want to make sure that there's an opportunity to have that because it doesn't make sense to put the cubicles if the next step is you're going to be reconsidering the floor plan. Not to hijack anybody's plans. It's just, all that's on the table. And I'm not offended either way. I just want to make sure it's open dialogue now with everyone rather than behind.
It's a consideration. That's a much larger plan in my mind, but that's just from my experience. But go ahead, Mr. Toffenelli.
Well, yeah, and I, what Amanda is talking about, I think there was some talk about if we were going to consolidate the elections office and the assessor's office and make that all one big office when you walk in with the counter either are or whatever. And that's a big undertaking to do. $124,000, you could probably move one wall, but it's not going to do much of anything else. It depends if it's a load-bearing wall and what you're moving.
Very good point, Mr. Toffenelli. And I understand where she's coming from, and not to take away from what the conversation would be. I think right now, in the interest of what our plan is and what the assessor is requesting on moving forward for space and being able to provide that as she fills the ranks over employees and being able to implement it, this may be, you know, I think, long-term, yes, that's a consideration, long-term, but right now, it's not in the cards. Let me just get to that. It's not in the cards right now.
Yeah, I agree. I wasn't sure where you were going, but if it's tied back to the consolidation of these offices, we've already discussed that and made a decision not to go down that path.
It wasn't tied to consolidation. It was more of a global approach. As we start these CIP projects, rather than keeping the narrow tunnel vision of just a stiletted department, why not expand that conversation to a global, global, where multiple departments could potentially benefit? And that's fine, and it can be something that we bring back to our committee and discuss for future, but it just, I was not looking at it as a consolidation. I was looking at a global approach to it in general, just in a general capacity.
I think overall, long-term, that global approach goes hand-in-hand with what you discussed, whether we're going to satellite out. I mean, everything. It comes down to everything on that global approach. So, yes, all needs to be part of the long-term conversation, but now, for this time, I think this may do as long as everyone approves of that $124,000 for what it's being proposed for. You okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, what's the next one in your budget book, Jack?
Clerk recorder, elections.
Any questions? Any statements by Ms. Turmer? We'll move on to the coroner, public administrator. Coroner and public administrator. Any statements?
I'll go ahead and just make a brief statement. This budget unit is essentially status quo. As you may know, in the sheriff's department budget, there is what I spoke about earlier regarding the investigatory sheriff, coroner budget unit, should your board just determine to combine those two offices, just as a remainder.
And that, thanks, sorry. Just got to be writing on the 15th, get rid of this. And the 275 that we budgeted earlier, that we spoke about earlier, that's planning money, basically.
Indeed, and I think that's an incredibly high number for planning, so should that initiative not be directed to move forward, then most of those funds would revert back to the general fund.
Thank you.
County council. Mr. Geremindi, your light's on. How much can you afford, Sarah? I'll leave that alone. I'll just say her last, her last page is 187, and I'll leave it at that. We'll move on to district attorney. Ms. Yuck. Or DA, District Attorney Yuck. Let me say it properly.
Good afternoon. I came down because I was having audio and visual problems, and I wanted to be accessible to you and not make you wait. So, I didn't have anything in particular, except I do want to briefly address item, line number 5801, the salary savings line in Department 30. That amount is there due to a miscommunication that my office had with admin. It's my understanding that admin had actually intended not to populate that amount.
I'm sorry. Could you please tell me that number's again, page and line? You mentioned it really fast.
Page number 192 in the budget book.
5801 on the bottom, salary savings.
Right. So, at this stage, you know, I am aware of all the work that's gone into the budget book and how much any changes would impact admin and the difficulties that causes. And I am aware that there is an opportunity to adjust that at final budget. However, you know, I'm also cognizant of how much work goes on throughout the year and the efforts that go into adjusting and re-looking at it and adjusting again and some of those difficulties. So I would prefer to deal with that today if possible, recognizing the burden that would put on admin because it was populated with that amount in error. It was a miscommunication that my office had with admin following our meeting in preparation for this budget.
Ms. Volbord?
Right, so I would say that perhaps revisiting that at the end of the meeting, but were that to be the only change your board directs, it would cost many thousands of dollars to make that one change in this one budget. And I would recommend that, should you direct, that that change be brought back at final, that we, District Attorney is able to use her currently existing appropriations to do whatever business she would like in the meantime, and then we'll fix it then. If your board directs other substantive changes, then it won't be easy to incorporate that. But to re-budget and rebalance this entire book, which is a practical matter, is what is required in order to make any changes at this point, for one change would not be efficient or cost-effective. No disrespect to the District Attorney, just a practical reality of life.
And I'm cognizant of that, so I kind of hesitated to bring it up. However, one of the big issues for my office is that we deferred filling a position for an entire year, and we really need that position. And so if we wait until final, we're again caught behind the ball, and I certainly don't want to take steps to fill a position and then be caught short. So it's that little bit of balancing act.
Understood, and I think my, my point is if you guys say, you know, go ahead and fill and fix it, we'll fix it at final, then that's, I think, sufficient for you.
This is the same point you brought up at mid-year.
I actually did not comment at mid-year. I took it as a challenge to live with what we had. It's what I brought last time at final and my direction at that, the direction at that point was, well, let's see how it goes at mid-year. So, we tried. We tried to make it, and we did squeak by this year. However, the fallout from taking this cut last year was that I did effectively lose a position. I was not able to fill a position, and we wiped out our litigation budget. So, we were very fortunate that the real-time analysis and the real-time progress of our cases did not result in us having to come back to the board to ask for money to carry out our cases. So, it was a very tough decision at mid-year not to seek that infusion. Michael Hatfield and I had many discussions about whether or not we wanted to come back and ask for the infusion. We just ultimately decided not to. And while I was not here and I was not, obviously, sitting in your seats, I remember how difficult that was at mid-year. So, my hope this year and my request this year is to just deal with it now so that we don't end up in that position at final or at mid-year.
So, I'm hearing two different things. You're asking to deal with it now so we don't have to deal with it at final, and you're suggesting that we finish out and do the change at final because it's not a cost to make that one change at this time.
I think we can walk the line here, which is where, there are more than sufficient appropriations in this budget unit for DA U to fill that position. The question, the issue at hand is that if the adjustment is not made in September, then there will be an appropriations problem towards the end of next fiscal year. Part of the reason for the recommendation to not re-implement, and I note that it was a, there was a miscommunication, but it was actually in the department-requested budget, which is where the, so we just didn't catch it until the budget book was done. But regardless, the reason for agreeing with DA U to recommend not re. DAU to recommend not re-implementing that cut is because this budget unit, which has historically experienced substantial salary and other savings, did not do so this year. And so, really, it is absolutely accurate to say that there was a question at mid-year about whether, I mean, it was definitely, I would have understood it had the District Attorney asked for an adjustment at that point, so clearly up to you, but if you're amenable to allowing DAU to go ahead and proceed with filling that position and want to still, with the understanding that we would have to, that we might be unwinding that cut, we would be unwinding that cut in September unless you guys direct me to make a bunch of other changes, in which case we'll do it now along with all the rest of them. Either way, it works.
All right. To Ms. Coway, Strugran, I'm going to pull the board. Mr. Toffenelli.
What are you pulling it for?
To let her fill the position for the time being, and then we make the appropriate adjustment at final budget.
Correct.
And it's on the $130,000 mark.
I have that amount. Sure, you need to advertise it, you need to put it out there, it's not out there, so we have to go through that whole thing and then background. So, if we put it out there now and get somebody to candidate, my final budget would be, anyway, so sure.
Ms. Coway.
So, what position is this, Ms. Yuck?
It's one of our support staff positions, the DA Services Tech.
If you both know they're going, they're going to be backgrounding you.
She's going to get a surgery.
I will if she goes to the gym.
Wow, there you go, there's a job going.
So, really, the question is, we're authorizing the position now, make adjustments down the road, whatever, whatever. What I thought I heard you say is, if there isn't the revenue, then there isn't a position. I mean, that's not fair. Either she gets it or she doesn't get it.
Let me rephrase that. So, the position is already on the books, it's already technically budgeted, except for the fact that we have re-implemented this 5.3% cut for the second year in a row. And so, in order to fill it comfortably without having to worry later on down the road about whether or not there would be salary or other savings to cover the cost, and there would not, there have not been this year, this current fiscal year, then she could go ahead, get it on, get it out for recruitment, do the recruitment, fill it, but your board would need to understand the recommendation and what would need to happen at final would be to unwind that 5.3% cut and the amount of $132,718. And like I say, if we end up making, if you end up directing other changes this afternoon or tomorrow, then we would incorporate it with those changes now. But if this is the only one, then just, we'll incorporate that in the final budget that comes in September.
We could take it from 172.
That is, that is, it would be an appropriate use of 172 funds, indeed.
I support the position. Not on again, off again, but on again.
Basically, you want some, you want a word, we're going to come through on this in the end, so you can begin the hiring process.
Yes.
Yes.
I want to keep the 5.3%, but you can have it. Yes.
Do I have to go to the gym with Marita?
Yes.
At least one.
Yes.
The same shirt, we want to.
And if you can get some guest membership cards, too, since now we know the price for vote, we all may want to go into the gym, too.
Great, thank you.
No comment. I don't want the DA prosecuting me for anything of the sort. Thank you, Ms. Yuck, we appreciate your time. Any further questions for the DA while she's here? I think we're good. I just received a message from Mr. Oliver. He thought the code compliance unit would be discussed separately from the building department. Can we please go back to the building department budget and give Mr. Oliver the opportunity? All right, you're okay?
All right. Thank you, chairman members of the board. I apologize for upsetting the mix here. I have two budget units, and I was waiting for the code compliance to come around, so once you went to the DA, I figured I made an error that I needed to correct. As you'll see in our code compliance budget pursuant to your board's adopting our new fee structure, we are not asking for any general fund money for that budget unit, but we are, we are essentially directing funds from the operating revenue of the building unit to pay for the code compliance unit, and the revenue generated by code compliance unit is part of our building revenue. That means that there's a few extra transfers between units in order to make this look on paper like it functions per your last board's fee adoption. That being said, I talked to the CIO, Krista Von Lana, a couple of months ago about the matter of merging the two budget units. We did not have time to do it during the preliminary budget, but I wanted to bring it up now as an opportunity to make the necessary corrections for the final budget, if that is your wish. In essence, what we're doing is we're recognizing that code compliance is now part of the building department as it really always had been, but it was broken out originally because of the separate funding sources that we are no longer using, and it is just more efficient to have that budget unit back into the building department budget unit where it should be. We're just looking for consent on whether we should move forward with that for the final budget, or whether we should wait a year and come at it at the next budget cycle.
Ms. Von Laa, do you find it attainable to be able to get that into the final budget? Or would it be more?
We can certainly do it. That's not, it's not a problem to do it. It's probably 6.15 to the other. It will be a little awkward looking at the budgets in the budget book itself, because they'll be totally different, but, you know, I mean, we can certainly do it if that's what the board directs. It's, I have no position really one way or the other in terms of whether it's done, in terms of when it's done, it's really neither here nor there.
Mr. Oliver, this will make your life easier?
In future budgets, yeah, it would eliminate a little bit of head-scratching, and it is a good show for staff morale, because I think it's pretty widely known that the code compliance unit has kind of felt like it's been on the outside. They are part of the team, they are part of the building department, and I feel it's good for morale and it's good for our efficiency. However, if your board decides that it is suitable to just go ahead and plan to implement that unification of our units for the next budget cycle, I'm happy to do that as well, as long as I have some direction one way or the other on that.
Mr. Toffenelli.
Yeah, I just, the only question I would have on what you're wanting to do, and I certainly don't have a problem with it, make your life easier, is whether Kathy Gomes has an issue with that, if she's going to be a problem with her doing what you're asking.
Ms. Gomes, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. I don't have a real issue. We would still have to approach any liens or code issues in the same manner as we always have, in terms of whether we would have to place it on the tax roll. The same rules would follow. So, there would be the same sort of scrutiny within our office, depending on what the actual program is, whether it's building and transfers related to them, or code compliance issues and liens and transfers related to them.
Thank you. Mr. Toffenelli.
That knows all I have.
So, are you in favor of unifying it, too? Sure. That's a yes. Ms. Coway?
I have some questions.
Absolutely.
Mr. Oliver, I feel like what I'm hearing is we're going to be using code enforcement revenue to subsidize the building department. I mean, that's what it, I'm trying to see, you know, other departments have several budget units similar to this, and I'm not clear how this, except maybe making it easier for the department head at budget time, I'm not clear what this is doing. Because if we want to know what it costs us to manage the wonderful work that code enforcement does, I'm sure every supervisor feels that way. I mean, how are we now tracking that? Because it's not going to exist.
To answer your questions, one for the tracking of the work that we're doing, the permanent processing software we have also handles our case management now. So, the amount of stops, the amount of cases, the types of cases, the amount of time spent on each case, that's all tracked independently of budget. In addition, the way the fee structure was adopted versus our nuisance abatement process, they're two distinctly different things. So, the case management component and the fees that your board adopted specifically to that is charged like a building service. However, as discussed in the fee hearing, your abatement, your nuisance abatement is where the citation ends and the other program begins. And so, we have a separate revenue fund for the collection of fines and the collection of abatement costs, which are separate than our building services, and that's a revolving fund that will continue to pay for abatement itself. So, we've got it broken out to where nuisance abatement is isolated or insulated in a special revenue fund, and that is now being used specifically for that purpose. So, there's no mingling of money and there's no ambiguity that, you know, we may argue was around in previous years. Yes, this, as I said, this does make it a little bit easier in the budgeting overall. We have all the tracking measures that your board can utilize to track performance, and I'm happy to produce those documents as you need them or quarterly, if you wish. In addition, we do have a very clear lie in the stand as to what revenue goes where and what funds are used to effectively do the job.
So, I'm not clear, how does this make it easier for you? Not that I don't want to make it easier for you.
Well, my, the constant distribution of revenue across units, we're one department, we're one unit, I'd like to have one budget to represent that, and we're in a unique position to do that. So, I mean, like I said, if this is something that is too, you know, too complex to put together in this timeframe for the final budget, then I would like to do it next year. But, like I said, it's both for morale and it's both for streamlined purposes. I'd like to have it in one basket, if you will.
Fine. I mean, I hear what you're saying. I'm not sure I comprehended all, but thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Coway, did you have a position on that, or not at this time?
Yes, I said yes.
Okay, yeah, I hear you now. Ms. Feldorf.
I'm even more confused than we voted on this now, but I'm just going to go to simplify it. You, regardless of these numbers, you just want to combine the two departments. Is that the end goal here?
Yes.
Okay. I think next time we just might want to start with that. Yes, I have no issue with that. It just, the budget, it's just threw me off. Okay, yeah, I don't have a problem with them, you know, going under one roof.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Toffenelli.
I just have one other question. HR, Judy, is this going to be a problem with her? Are we going to re-classify people?
I imagine she is on, and I defer to her, oh, I hear now.
I'm right here. So, what will be required in my department is we will have to reassign position control numbers to some of the employees. We have done this before, so we do have existing numbers that can be used.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll be the fourth vote. Yes, Doug, I don't want code compliance to feel like the redheaded stepchild.
Thank you, sir.
Thank them for their good work.
I will, thank you.
Is that all, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. I need to make sure I didn't skip anything. We went to the DA, so, or environmental Any questions by board members? Does Lisa want to talk about rabies shots?
I did this morning, thank you, Chair Stoffer.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you, too.
Did you have anything you wanted to talk about, or are you comfortable with what's shown here or no?
Yes, very comfortable, and I would like to respectfully thank the board for acknowledging our animal services shelter. We are very enthusiastic, more beyond happy, and we're looking forward to continuing to service our calaveras community and our little fur babies.
Thank you.
I am beyond happy, too.
Marita says she's happy also. Next time she needs to draw on her microphone so she can let you hear.
Do I have to go work out at the gym, too?
Marita would like you to.
Thank you very much, respective board members.
We'll move on to Health and Human Services Agency. Any questions by board members? Any statements by Ms. Allen? Would that?
That's what I am here for, questions.
Is that somebody's mic on still? Oh, is that Ms. Allen?
I think so.
I was just saying, I don't have anything to add at this moment, but I am available for questions, along with, obviously, your CIO and our fiscal team is available as well.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. I think at this time, the board's comfortable with what's being shown here. Move on to Human Resources and Risk Management. Oh, did somebody have something?
No.
My, okay, yeah, it is. I can't, I mean, if I could reallocate it, I would, but I can't, so. You can sit, you can sit here with it.
Yeah.
Human Resources and Risk Management. Ms. Hawkins, board members, any statements, questions? Okay, good. We'll move on to Information Technology. Any board questions? Mr. Moore? Ms. Von Laa, I mean, you're over at Administration, but this is Mr. Moore's dig.
Nothing to comment on from my side from Information Technology.
Thank you, sir. Integrated Waste Management. I mean, we've got a long conversation coming in August. Mr. Feriani, anything? Board members, any questions? Library? Board members, Ms. Giddens, Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, I'm going to go back to page...number 40, 41. We've doubled the funding for the library from last year. We went from 309, 832 to 65964. Is there a reason for that?
Just one moment.
That's general fund contribution, not our total budget, just the general fund?
Yes. So, when we look at this budget unit, we can see a massive difference in overall revenue due to decreased grant funding this coming fiscal year over what has been this current fiscal year. In addition, we've seen an increase in overall, and I'll scroll down to the bottom here, but you can see as it relates to salaries and employee benefits. So, almost $100,000 there between those two things, and we were fortunate to have the grant funding that we did, and I'll defer to Ms. Giddens to explain to your board about that. But when we look back actually at actuals, so for example, here it was $535,000 back in 1920. The year-to-date actuals for 2021 are 477, 896. So, we can see that it's not actually that far off. We're just not enjoying the grant funding that we had in this current year.
Well, I'm saying the budget is not that much different, but the general fund contribution has doubled. That's why I went back to page 41. This is not going to tell me general fund dollars, which is her budget. Her budget was 912 last year, 942 this year, but you go back to this page 41, and it was only 300 and something thousand last year of general fund. This year, we doubled it to over 600,000 of general fund dollars. And so, it wasn't a question about her budget being over that, it's why did we increase general fund? Did she lose that much in revenue in grant funding?
She lost a very large grant, and if you look here, you'll see for 1920, the general fund contribution was $535,000. So, this current year, this is for 1920, actual general fund contribution was $535,000, and I do believe we've added a position since then.
That grant funding, all that was like the lunch services...
And the bookmobile.
And the bookmobile. So, and so that was specific. And are we continuing the lunch services?
So far as I believe, in fact, I believe that where there are increased lunch services and that, again, I would defer to Ms. Giddens if she's available, but my understanding is that they're serving more lunches, not for your...
That was my understanding when she gave the presentation.
She gave a presentation, yeah, that we are in the bookmobile. Okay, well, I just want to say, you're saying it was, the difference is from last year to this year is a grant?
Yeah, let me scroll back up so it's a little easier to visualize. So, right, so, these funds here that are budgeted for state grants for 269, 512, that was for this current fiscal year. $170,000 of that can be found down on the capital assets line item for this current fiscal year, and that was for the bookmobile. That cost has gone down for this year, but it still remains. In addition, I believe that there were matches from the Friends of the Library, again, special revenue fund transfer in to cover part of the offset from the grant, but the grant has essentially been received. So, between that and then just MOU and other salary increases, at the end of the day, it's not as dramatic as it looks because, like I pointed out, if we look back just as recently as fiscal year 1920 actuals, the actual general fund contribution in that fiscal year was $535,000, and I'm not entirely sure, although I can certainly look up what the final budget amount was for that year, I suspect it might have been higher.
Okay, all right. That's all, thank you, I appreciate it.
Pleasure.
Okay, let's move on to probation.
Wait, I do, I do have a point.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Toffenelli. Go ahead.
You spoke earlier about the effects of the Butte Fire and not being able to bill anymore and showing that we don't show that as income. Do we know what's outstanding that FEMA hasn't paid yet? Do we have any number that has been billed or needs to be billed that is still there that we won't recognize until we receive it that's not in this budget?
No, it's not in this budget for revenue. What is, is, I'm hoping Director Osborne is on the line because he's been looking into this.
I mean, we talked last year that it was like $3 million, that we were getting $1 million sometime in September.
We did receive some funds in this current fiscal year.
I would like to know what's outstanding that we possibly could be receiving now that we're closing out this year, and it will obviously be into next year, that we'll see some of that funding come in, if whatever amount is out there that still hasn't been paid.
Okay, we may need to circle back to this as we're not hearing Director Osborne on the line. One moment.
Now, the CIO, I am here.
Oh, great, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I was on the phone and I was asking, Supervisor Toffenelli, what was your question, sir?
The question, you wanted me to repeat the question to you?
Yes, sir, please.
The question is on FEMA and Butte Fire. How much outstanding that we built FEMA and they haven't paid, we haven't been received yet? And do we have any more out there to bill for? And what is that number if so?
So, I'll address that first. The only remaining project in the Butte Fire is Project 78. It is Phase 2, it's 1,545 hazard trees to be removed. Thank you, Krista, you were right on top of that, perfect. And you'll see that in this budget here, there's approximately $1.87 million in work to do there. About 800 of that is project management, and the rest is actual tree cutting. So, that's the only thing outstanding. We have a path forward on that, that's why it's included in this budget. You'll see a request for an amendment to our contract with TSS Renewables on the June 22 meeting to move forward with that. We hope to have these trees cut down by the end of this fiscal, or I'm sorry, calendar year, and then we will completely close out the Butte Fire DR.
Have we received all of the funds that we billed for from FEMA?
We have just closed, in regards to the Butte Fire, we have closed all but 78, and I believe we just closed, we have not received a couple of them. I have to dig this. Let me get to...bear with me for just one second, sir.
Sure.
So, we have requested that they close out Project 99, and that was requested April So, we haven't received those funds.
How much is that?
I can tell you the, I am looking at the closed request at $987,073.13. Of that request, I do not know off the top of my head what we received beforehand. And then, in addition to that, on the same closure date, we requested Project 88 in the amount of $373,994.85. Again, I don't know if we received any advances on that request, but that was the final closeout request.
Okay.
That's a... So, if we haven't received any of it, then we're looking at about 1.3 million?
1.35, 3.6.
So, Director Osborne, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you state that it's not clear which monies we might have already received, are you speaking there about the advanced funds? And if so, do you have any idea to what extent the 1.35 might be offset by that?
You can certainly hear...
By looking, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
I was just going to make a statement before you chimed in. It was so quiet, you could hear a pin drop waiting for you to answer.
That's because I'm trying to remember the project number and the DR number. I was focused for you. The amount received, the amount in Project 88 appears to be 36,193. I would defer to the auditor's office, Ms. Gomes, to confirm that for Project 88, and It shows an amount recovered of 350,662. So, most of 99, or I'm sorry, 350,000 of that 987,000, looks like we have received it at some point. And then, for Project 88, a prenomial amount, 36,000. And again, I would defer to the auditor's office to confirm those numbers.
That's still about 1 million, close to a million. Okay, thank you, and that's all been billed and closed out, and we're waiting just to get the final payment from FEMA for those two projects.
Yeah, those projects are in closeout. Project 99 is, that was actually a guinea pig way project that Cal OES did, and the method that they executed that, so it may take quite a while to reconcile that, but I keep tabs on that one and as well as the Project 88.
Okay.
Thank you, John. You're welcome, sir.
There's actually quite a bit of progress since even just two years ago, you know, that closing those out.
Is it possible where you see some of those funds during this coming fiscal year?
But until we realize them, we have more directions.
We may have a decision a couple of years ago.
Yes, sir. Agreed. Are we comfortable with OES? Let's move to planning. Plan probation. I think Sam's a lot more comfortable back in his old seat. Public access TV. Mr. Leach, did you have something to say?
Yes, who did? I was just going to concur and thank you for that, but yes, very happy.
Oh, I'm happy to see your face again, you know? We missed it the last few meetings, so.
Thank you. I miss you guys as I dwindle in obscurity over here, so. Talking aside, thank you guys and good luck with the rest of it.
Thank you. Public access TV. Public Works. Think we, Ms. Callaway has touched on the RIM funds earlier. I don't have further questions on that personally. The sheriff?
Oh, boy, do I.
Oh, my God, it's going to take the rest of the day.
Oh, what?
You want three new employees, are those three new employees? Are the three new employees in this?
They are. If it's only the employees you wish to discuss, then we could do that all together at the end with the other positions.
Right. Is there anything...
Indeed, yes, yes.
Anything other than the salary positions that you would like to discuss, Ms. Callaway? Lights on.
I've already discussed it with the sheriff.
Very good.
Refrigerated unit?
With that?
Yes, the refrigerated unit.
Keep your ice cream in there.
I'm not sure how fresh that would stay. It's treasurer tax collector.
I want to know, is there going to be a snowplow under the bear cat? Is that in the budget?
Under the bear cat?
On, yeah.
There is a snowplow on the capital assets list, I do believe.
I want one for the sheriff, for plow, for sheriff's bear cat.
She wants one on the bear cat. Ms. Callaway, this is the sheriff. If you want to buy me a snowplow for that bear cat, I'll absolutely put one on there.
I didn't think he was listening.
Well, now, he wouldn't be, he's a sheriff.
He's holding out.
There you go.
All right, let's move on to treasurer tax collector and leave the bear scout behind. Special districts? Special districts. Do you have something on special districts, Ms. Callaway?
Yeah, there's like, yeah.
It's green.
Not on special districts, on the special revenue funds. I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay.
May I ask what page?
In the beginning.
What page?
5204, 4545. I just, can you put your mic up, please?
Thank you for something. I just want to confirm my memory, we're not doing the 27th payroll anymore?
So, we are still anticipating to make the 27th payroll payment into the PERS unfunded liability, Section 115 trust prior to the end of the fiscal year. We do not have in place any policy or refunding of this fund at this point. So, that is certainly something for your board to consider as we move forward. But as a reminder, the Section 115 trust funds can be used for any PERS-related, retirement-related reimbursement. So, were we to hit the 27th payroll without having available general funds to make those, that expenditure, then what we could do would be to offset our unfunded liability, for example, via the Section 115 trust to free up general fund dollars. And then, it would essentially get us to the same place. But no, in terms of ongoing mechanism for refilling that fund, there is nothing in place.
We're not gonna do that.
That's for your board to determine, but there's nothing in place at this time.
Because that was a pretty hefty amount.
Approximately 1.5 million, just shy of 1.5 million.
Okay, just...
Didn't we, we, we always did that.
Right, but I remember, it was the last year, year before, we put it into paying down PERS liability.
That, it's actually, that was not funded last year. We're working on getting it funded this year, right now, between now and June 30th. But, and I honestly, I confess, and perhaps the auditor controller could fill in my institutional knowledge here, I don't know when this fund stopped receiving revenues, or whether this was simply a set aside of a lump sum at one...
It was a set out. Sorry, I just, nothing. It was, where's that called?
We got that.
It was, it was a set aside.
Okay.
Because it was a significant amount of money, correct me, Gary? And when times were bad, which happened?
Yes.
We had the revenue to pay it.
Okay.
So, I didn't know if that is a recommendation from your office, or, or is that something that the board should be making? I mean, we look to your office as the budget gurus.
Sure.
And if you think there's enough on the long-term basis, I mean, we can look at it, I guess, at final budget, but I just saw it was, there's nothing in there.
My recommendation for that at this point, although certainly we'll give it some additional thought between now and adopted budget and some additional communication with my colleagues, but would be for that to be something that the Strategic Planning and Financing Committee might want to take up over the course of the next year while looking at other resiliency-type measures, and then bringing those recommendations back to the board.
I would throw it in Amanda's lap also.
Since she's the only one in here on that committee that, yes, I think.
You've been voluntold.
Well, when is, when is that? How far are we till we hit the 27th payroll?
It, I believe is somewhere around 2027, 26, 27, 28. It's, it's right in there. I can double check and get back to you on that.
And what started it is that we were grasping for dollars to pay it. And we thought, we don't want to be in that position again.
Ever again, yeah.
So, so I guess I'd look to your office for advice on whether we should or shouldn't. My second is on the water enhancement program. That is, that the $900, the in lieu for water? And what makes it even more of an issue is what's happening with the Board of Forestry as Mr. Oliver talked about with us, that people are focused on roads, but there's a water component to the rules that take effect in October. So, I didn't know if that was, the water enhancement program was the same as the in lieu, the $900 in lieu?
It is. Thank you. Yes, that's my understanding.
So, is there something maybe we should be doing with those funds, or programming them, or looking at them based on the kinds of things Mr. Oliver talked to us about? That would be a further discussion down the road, not at this point in time.
Sure.
But it looks like there's no money coming in for 21, 22?
Actually, this budget unit needs to be, needs to be budgeted at the final adopted budget, so we'll bring back modifications to this budget, including some budgeting of revenues. Year-to-date was $48,000, so we'll see whether or not this $54,000 comes to fruition. And if appropriate, I will certainly reach out to Mr. Oliver and see whether, what his thoughts are on the matter. But we'll bring better, additional recommendations as it relates to this budget in September.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further on that, Ms. Callaway? With that, I think we're at a point where we'll be moving on to the salaries and employees part. I do believe that Mr. Gary Mindy did have a lot of questions along with other supervisors. I would, we're getting close to 4 o'clock right now. Will we be comfortable coming back tomorrow morning and including Mr. Gary Mindy in the conversation?
Is he not coming back today?
He, he doesn't know how long it'll take. So, I mean, here, can we take a five-minute break?
Sure.
And, and I'll reach out to him and see, see when he's coming.
Hard wait for being done today.
Right, no, we're real, we're real close, and I, I'm willing to take the push also, so, so, right. No, I get it.
And that's Christopher Obama. It's not like it is. Well, no, that's not, no, no.
Thank you, welcome back, Mr. Gary Mindy. Thank you for coming back.
Thank you for 30 minutes, Mr. Chair.
So, we, we finished up with the general budget. At this time, we were getting ready to move on to salaries and position control list. Is there anything you've got to say?
Yeah, thank you. If, if, at the pleasure of the board, I, I apologize for stepping out for 30 minutes. I had a personal thing I had to take care of. I had no idea you guys were gonna be able to get through a budget this quick, so I'm duly impressed. But one of the items I was hoping we could discuss at this time was public access TV. And if there's the desire from the board or willingness to go back and talk about it, I would like to. However, if there's not the willingness, there's nothing I can do about that.
Mr. Toffnelli?
I think you go back that way, I won't change my vote.
Understood. Ms. Callaway?
Can talk about it.
Okay. We'll talk about it. Ms. Fulendorf?
We'll talk about it.
We'll talk about it.
All right, thank you very much. Here's my concern. Public access TV spends, you know, we spend roughly, my notes here, we spend $167,000, general fund dollars, in order to match or get that $85,000 franchise fees. So, we're spending $200,000 on salaries and benefits overall. My thought, and we have a building that the county owns down, you know, over here in San Andreas. We talk all the time about we don't have space for people, and I want to suggest that perhaps the world has changed, and we learned a lot about that in COVID, that we don't need a television studio in order to do, communicate with the public. Any kid with an iPhone and internet connection can do an interview and post it online. And fewer and fewer people are using our public access channels. In fact, I'd be interested who's watching it at all. So, I think that we can still do the communications with our public, do the, with the work that people like Susan do, and communicating and posting this stuff online. But I don't think, I think the world has evolved past having to have a hard studio and all the costs that are associated with that. So, my suggestion would be to take some of that money that we use from general fund and put it in something like IT in order to communicate with the public, and in essence, eliminate PATV, which will eliminate our access to $85,000. But there's gonna still be savings to our general fund as well as space. So, I know, nobody likes to talk about this, we like PATV, they're nice people. This isn't about them, it's just, are we willing to evolve past, past, you know, what we've done historically and move forward into the future and save money? That's what I wanted to see if there was interest in that.
Ms. Fulendorf?
I am interested in reevaluating and considering that, especially since with COVID, and wanting to evolve and get into the 21st century. I mean, even as board members, we want to do town halls and do, do certain things, and we just don't have the equipment. And if we utilize some of these changes that Jack has suggested, I think we can get, get there. Not tomorrow, not today, but like the process of the conversation of what did it look like in the next couple of years? And I recognize that there are still a lot of people that utilize the cable TV and are not using a Roku or Netflix. But I feel that we need to at least have the conversation and be honest with ourselves of what this cost really means.
Ms. Callaway, Mr. Toffnelli, either you have comments to these points?
I'll say. I understand what Jack's saying and Amanda, but I think $167,000 in the total budget that we have in front of us with the $78 million in general fund is a drop in the bucket. I believe it provides a social, in a, a good service to our constituents. It's being filmed here right now, that goes on YouTube. People go, you look at the views on YouTube on this. There are programs that people talk about all the time that I hear about that are on PEG TV. I, I think $167,000 is just a drop in the bucket for the, what we are getting for that money. I think it's well spent. I, I think Mr. Lark does a great job with the amount of money he has. You're looking at, what is it, $257,000 for what he provides? I, I can't see it, I mean, I just, I think it's a great service to our constituents.
Ms. Callaway?
I agree with Gary. Years ago, we used to have fights in the boardroom about all these different community groups wanting an allocation of funds. And anyway, we've evolved where we really don't give, give that money out anymore. But what this money does is services some of those groups and programs that we no longer fund as a county. And I look at what some other counties have done, and they do give to their community organizations. But, you know, the chamber uses it, education system uses it, the program with Dr. Thompson, the doctors in program, the ones that Tammy Bilstein does, the ones that Kathy used, that Kathy, I don't know if she still does, I haven't seen it. So, I think it serves a larger audience than just the Board of Supervisors. And I am sometimes amazed at people saying, oh, I saw that on community TV. So, even though, you know, there isn't maybe a mechanism, maybe there is, to know how many people tune in, I think we get, we as a county in a holistic way get a return on that investment, and other groups get a return because of the funding from the county. So, it's not that I'm totally for moving into the 21st century, and maybe there's a way to do it. But I believe community TV serves a purpose other than just the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. I get both sides. I, I, there's definitely a movement towards the 21st century that needs to be made, but there is a segment of the community that uses this service because they aren't part of the 21st century when it comes to what types of devices they use. There are many people that give me a call from my district that are, that don't use computers, they don't trust them. I was like, can I, can I email you the information? No. They use public access TV because that's what they know, that's what they're comfortable with. They, and I'm actually surprised that, you know, there are people younger than me that I work with that are like, watched you on public access TV yesterday, you know, learned something about the board, and how often they actually do watch it. I'm surprised at some of the people that do, it just amazes me. So, I think that, in the sense I do agree with you, I think it's a longer-term transition that needs to happen. I don't think it's something that's gonna happen right now. I, I think we need to hold on to what we have right now so that we can continue to provide those services to the people that use that service within the community, that don't use the 21st century type of equipment. And then, you know, in a, in a long term, move on to that transition and, you know, with that. Is there something further you want to add to that, Ms. Fulendorf?
Yes, I think it goes back to earlier conversations we had the last couple months of strategic planning, and I think this is a perfect example of where there's a crossroad of wanting to make some changes without losing it, and how do you get to that? And maybe it's something we bring back to the Strategic Planning Committee and Finance Committee, well, what did that look like? And I don't think the intent is to cut budget this year. It's the conversation of, can we start talking about it for the future? So, would the board entertain that? And how do we bring a hybrid? Do we, you know, going back to what Jack, Supervisor Gary Mindy was saying, do we really need to have the location if we provide them the technology? Do we need to be paying for a building when you can have it in such a, in a green, a smaller green room and the overflow? I mean, so those are, I think, some of the things to, to dive deeper into with those items. I don't think the intent, at least my intent is not to cut it this year. My, my, it just, I want to talk about it and look how we can plan down the road.
I, I see where things are going. I, I see where things are going. Amanda and I will obviously continue to talk about this and strategic planning. I'm going to point out that we're not moving into the 21st century. We're 21 years into the 21st century. So, we're not, we're already there. And I'm not suggesting we don't communicate. I'm suggesting that we could have a higher and better use for that building, like selling it and building like animal shelter. And we could have higher uses for the dollars, like deputy sheriffs or other things. So, these are, these are the value judgments we make as a board. I hear the perspective of the board. And thank you for listening.
All right. Let's move on to salaries and the position control list. Ms. Von Latta, I would definitely want to be a part of this discussion when it comes to the assessor's office. I would like to segment that out separately so I can maybe recuse myself from that part of it. I appreciate it.
I have one more question. Krista, how come the clerk to the board is not under the Board of Supervisors' budget?
The clerk to the board is under the...
It's under the clerk, it's under the clerk recorder, but not under the budget unit of the Board of Supervisors? I was just...
It's a good question, honestly. I haven't given it...
Candidly, I haven't given it much thought other than the supervisors themselves. At least during my tenure, we haven't had any other salaries or benefits coming out of that budget unit. The clerk of the board is under the clerk recorder. And so, and I'm not sure it might actually be split among more than one budget unit, but I don't... Sorry? Wonderful.
She's also the facilitator for the board, board budget also. So, yeah, I'll let her explain it.
So, technically, the reason is, is the clerk to the board is under the county clerk's department because by virtue of being the county clerk, I'm the clerk of the board and tell the board, by ordinance, changes that in some manner. So, right now, in our department, we look as the clerk of the board as being a county clerk. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. It's by statute, essentially.
Let's move on.
Okay. So, you have for you the positions that, as, as discussed earlier, are already incorporated into the requested appropriations and the budget units that we have looked at so far. Starting from the top, I'll take you back to the conversation that was had at a study session recently where Director Hawkins discussed the substantial outages at the elected officials' positions, assessor, tax, treasurer, tax collector, auditor, controller, and clerk recorder. If you'll recall, at that time, there were several different metrics that were evaluated in terms of comparable salaries for these positions. And they were comprised of different counties, whether it was the sheriff's management unit, I believe SEIU, a couple of other, or at least one other metric. This number, the $68.15, would represent a 24% increase. But that is the average of the outages that were discussed with your board at that time. After discussion with Ms. Hawkins, we are recommending, I am recommending, that this increase be implemented, these positions. And the reason why this increase is being brought to you now is because they are so substantially under, undermarket. And it has been a very, very long time since they've been adjusted. Should Director Hawkins wish to jump in here, I invite her to do so. But this is the recommendation before you know. Likewise, by statute or by local ordinance, the board's salaries would follow at a significantly reduced rate.
So, I, I'm sorry. I would like to add in that the reason that we are also making this recommendation is with the upcoming salary class and comp study, this rate would put them in line with our other salaries. And then, they can be reviewed further with the salary comp study.
Board member comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Toffnelli.
Are all of these numbers that appear on this list that you have here in this budget book?
Indeed, yes.
They're already incorporated in here?
Yes, they are.
So, so any that we say no to would increase contingencies funds?
Yes.
Dollars?
Projected, yes.
Krista?
And, sorry to interrupt, but just, there are positions that we're not discussing at this moment that are non-general fund. And that, yeah, okay. Thanks. Supervisor Garimandi?
So, if we, you know, as I mentioned when we were on the assessor's page, I'm not on board with all the changes that are here. But it is just a budget item. I'm not getting specifics. So, my question is, can, if we, if we hold that, the reclassification, all those pieces, to keep the budget, we're not increasing much to, it won't change much of the budget, right? It's not altogether, you know?
So, let me rephrase that and see if I'm understanding the question. So, if, and we are kind of treading in a bit here to some territory. But in general, in general, any of these positions that weren't approved or modifications, the funds are already budgeted, would remain in the budget. And we could either bring back adjustments at final or what have you. But, yes. Was that, was that the question?
So, we could keep the budget there?
You can keep the budget as it is and say no to the position, and then we fix it at final?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just clarify right now. My personal position on, on the elected positions, until we bring everyone up to level down lower, I think we should be waiting on those. That's just my personal position when it comes to the elected positions. Everything else, I'm taking assessors out. The, the positions for the sheriff's department, I'm good with. And everything else that you're, that you're suggesting. With that, I'm, you know, you know my positions on this. I'm willing to walk out right now and let you debate the thing in its entirety, with the assessor's office included. And I'll recuse myself from the rest. I've stayed in my position unless you want to say something first, Ms. Coway.
We talked about an Assistant CAO.
Oh, yes, I did bring that up. Yes.
So...
That's something I would like to be introduced. I did briefly discuss this with Ms. Von Latta. I think that for administration purposes and, and possibly future purposes, it may be a good position to add in here. But that, you know, I'm willing to let the board debate and discuss that further, and I can leave it on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I may, maybe if we just separate out the assessor's piece, finish the other part, and then, after your excuse, we could go back to that.
You started treading in there. I just want to give a hand. I'll see, get myself out.
I withdraw that line of questioning until later.
Thank you.
So, and if I may just make one point as it relates to the elected official salaries. What I believe Ms. Hawkins was explaining is that there is already so much compaction that it will be difficult to implement class and comp recommendations without coming back, which is not to say that these adjustments couldn't be made at a later date, simply to acknowledge the fact that there is substantial compaction with some of these positions at this time. The other consideration, just for eyes wide open purposes for the board is clearly that we'll be heading into an election cycle. And so, whether these adjustments are made now or later may have some impact one way or the other in definite way as it relates to that. But, sorry. Excuse me. Thanks.
I think, you know, I, I understand where Ms. Hawkins is coming from. I understand the timeline. I, you know, I, I'm just solid on the position that, you know, if those rates of compaction are, are part of the holdup, that will be shown in the class and comp study. And until we bring everyone up to the right level, I'm not comfortable raising my salary ahead of theirs.
Understood.
I have a different take on it. One, when it comes to the Board of Supervisors, because of where we sit, we're always reluctant to do anything for board members. And considering we do not get reimbursed for any expenses that we incur. And it's always makes nice copy to say the board didn't increase their salaries. But we make substantially less than all the other electeds. And we know that going in. And I don't think that there should be any reason that we should not get an increase, nor do I. And I also believe some of the, the other elected should. As I said, it makes good copy for the newspaper, but, or whatever 21st century media, social media we use. But in two weeks, it's going to be something else. And that comes up every time the board has to acknowledge, yes, we should get an increase. When, I know all of us pretty much work seven days a week. We pay for everything that we go to. I, it sounds good to say, you know, unless everybody else is taken care of, I'm not going to take care of me. I, that sounds nice, but I think the board deserves an increase. Otherwise, you also start having people only that have money can be members of the Board of Supervisors. And I think the compensation for the board should be raised. And I have no problem with maybe raising the compensation for the other electeds. I mean, the board does it. There's a 60-day waiting period before it goes into effect. And I don't think we should be embarrassed to say that the board deserves an increase.
Further comments? Further, my call. Further comments? Ms. Fuldorff?
My comment was, would there be a consideration? I recognize what Supervisor Coway says. But removing the five here, focus on the department or the elected department heads, recognizing that in some of these positions, the subordinate that they oversee and supervise are making close to, if not more, than they are. And, and go that route. And then, discuss always at a later date. But I think that they need to be, they need to be recognized, to be appointed of making way, way more and the people that are under them.
I'd defer to Ms. Hawkins or Ms. Edwards in terms of the process here.
Yes, if I may, the, the reason that the increase is calculated in the manner that it is, is that the board salary is established by ordinance, which is tied to the elected officials. And so, when the salary changes for the elected officials, it does change the board salary. And so, if you wish, then we would need to rescind that ordinance or, or change it in a manner. Sarah, I'll let you.
I, I, I understand that. But I think from a legal standpoint is, I'm willing to not do that if that means that these other department heads get the raise that they deserve to, to recognize them or elected department heads.
Yeah, we, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Garimandi?
Thank you. I was gonna, you know, I was gonna agree with Maria. I think we ought to just get on with it. Jerry Obranion, who was a 30-year supervisor in Mersege County, recently passed away, once told me, just get on with it. Take that. I'm gonna listen to Jerry.
Mr. Toffnelli?
I can count to do math.
Light?
Just do a do.
I'm not going to label you for this, Larry, Gary. Gary. I'm gonna, I'm gonna need your light on though so that we can hear what you have to say.
Well, as far as the elected, the four elected are listed here, this has been going on for at least a couple of years, especially if it comes around budget time. It's been out here. We've, we've denied it every time. And looking at some of the comps around us and what's been presented, I, I would have to agree with Marita. As far as the Board of Supervisors, it is an ordinance. However, in Marita, excuse me. And however, Marita does know that when the adjustments have come, we haven't given this big of a raise to the other electeds in a while. But there are cost of living raises. And each board member makes a determination whether they want to say they'll accept it or not. So, you can accept this raise, and you, you can say, "No, I don't want it." And you, you send a letter to Judy saying that you refuse to take the raise, and then you won't get it. But this is tied, she's correct, there's an ordinance that's tied to this. However, these four elected officials that are here have been asking for this for quite a while. And I think they're do it. I don't have an issue, I don't think, with that part of it. And the rest of what comes, it comes. And if we don't want to do it, we don't want it. We can always say we don't accept it. So...
Good point, Mr. Toffnelli. So, what I'm hearing is three in favor and two not.
Ms. Fuldorff, do you want to clarify your position?
I just want to make sure that the four are compensated. So, I will go with consensus if that's what the consensus is. But I still, and now learning about the ordinance. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify. So, we're agreeing to everything with the exception of the assessor, which we'll take after your answer.
That's what I'm hearing. Except for, we haven't really discussed the CAO position yet. Or the Assistant CAO. So, so right, right now, I'm, I'm hearing 4-1 for the elected positions. Let's say, taking the assessor's part out, is everyone in favor of everything else on this list as presented in the budget?
Adding in the Assistant CAO.
And we'll get to that. I'll, I'll get to that next.
I, I do have a question about the sheriffs. Going through the, going through the list that we have here that was given to us earlier, there's a number of deputy decision, positions that are vacant. And he's asking for deputies. I know he's calling them Met, and he's calling them the other one. I know, he's calling them met, and he's calling them the other one, E D E A T. But I'm looking at a number of deputy, one deputy, two positions that are open. Are these just going to be another open position that he can't recruit to get? Or is he looking at moving existing deputies around and keeping the other ones vacant? I'm not sure what's going on.
Supervisor Toffenelli, Sheriff DeVassilio, I can answer that for you if you'd like.
Okay.
Those positions are positions that we're going to add. We've actually got four people that we're putting in the academy in August. If I had these positions, I'd be able to put six people into the academy to fill those positions. There was a little bit of time where we were actually full and had to pass on hiring some people that we had on the hook. So as you know, that we have an attrition right here in the county, and we can attribute it to whatever you want. But these positions would allow me to put more people out on the streets, which is my goal. It always has been the goal of the Sheriff's Office, to get more people out on the streets. So if I had those positions, I'd be able to hire more, drawing a blank here, lateral deputies that are trying to move from other departments. We have hired a couple of those. We'd like to get more, but I need the positions. And then the, the one position is a sergeant's position for the jail, a correctional sergeant.
Yeah, I, I understood that one.
Yeah.
It's just, I'm looking at, this position list that was given to us, Rick.
Right.
And just under the Deputy Sheriff, I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine deputy positions, four of those trainees that are open.
That's incorrect. There's not nine open deputy positions right now.
That was what was presented to us, that's why I'm asking the question.
No, I, I think you're both correct. So it's five open deputy positions and four open deputy trainee positions. Is that consistent with what you both understand?
That is correct. The deputy trainee positions are positions that the Board gave us quite a while back, Gary, so that we could always put somebody in the academy so that we didn't.
Correct.
So we weren't always falling behind. And here's the problem, is that we were full for a minute there, and we did not put people into the academy. We had a retirement, and we had four people leave to go to other departments. We did pick up some positions, so we're backfilling those positions now. And again, it goes back to the attrition that we consistently have here. These two new positions are so that we can fill more positions. Because we have the attrition rate, we'll be able to keep more people on the streets. The salary savings you folks pull back in, and I hate to use the word sweep, but you sweep that money back into the budget every year, so it's not like it's going to hurt the county as a whole, but it's going to help the Sheriff's Office in maintaining more people on the patrol staff that we need. And again, we've got, the four trainee positions are ever revolving. So we have four people going into the academy now, that's four of those nine that you're talking about. So those four, and again, they're, I think they're classified as, and Judy, correct me if I'm wrong, extra higher positions at this point, because that's what they are, they're just, you know, they're trainees. Once they hit the streets, then we can put more people into the academy for that four. It's kind of like the cars. If we don't keep a continuous rotation going, we're always going to be short, we'll never get caught up. We didn't put people into the academy the last time because we were full, and I didn't want to, well, we had people on the hook to get hired, but I had no place to put them, so they went elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
You bet.
And if I can further clarify those trainee positions, we also had asked for those so that our correctional officers that were transitioning over to deputies, they could go through the academy without losing their benefits. Because previously, they would become extra hires, they would lose their benefits, and then become deputies. We created those slots so that they could maintain, they would be, they would maintain their benefits. That was something that Sheriff DeVassilio had worked with HR to, to do, to make it more beneficial for the correctional officers that wanted to become deputies.
Thank you, Judy.
And two, and for the four that we have that are going to the academy, two of those are coming out of the jail, Mr. Supervisor Toffenelli, just so you know that we are continuing that program.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. Any further questions on any of the salary positions, separate from the assessor's office? And if everyone's okay with that, we'll move on to discussion of the Assistant CIO. I'll just make it brief. I'm in support of reopening a position for Assistant CIO. I'm not going to get into a deep comment or explanation on it. I think you all are well aware of the different ways that it can help us out in the future. Mr. Garimandi.
I'm not opposed to the Deputy, to Assistant CIO at all. However, our new CIO is just under seven hours on the job, and I would like her to come back with a plan for her office and how this would fit, in the broad sense, and give her some time to strategize how she wants her team built. I'm not opposed to it. I would like to see this part of the broader picture.
Good point. Good point, Mr. Garimandi. Ms. Fuldorff?
Conco.
I, I agree. I was gonna say almost the same thing as Jack, I could say that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm agreeing with Jack and Gary.
Okay.
You run your show.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're all, we're all in agreement. Thanks for refining the point. Mr. Garimandi.
So if I were to bring this recommendation back sooner rather than later, is, is that acceptable to your Board?
That's up to you.
Up to you.
That's your call.
All right.
Well, we'll, we'll see when it comes to agenda review.
Understood. Okay. Fair enough.
Very good. Very good. Um, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and walk out of the room for the assessor's office. Please, when you're done, text me, and I'll come back. Ms. Fuldorff, do you have the hammer? Yes, it is. It's from the veterans. Um, yeah, thank you.
Okay. So we want to, is there any Board comment on your assessing list that is in front of us?
Ms. Calaway?
I, I do have a question, and it's to Krista. Krista, obviously you're recommending these, so I assume you're in agreement with what's presented here.
I am. I believe that, going back to the study session, I think it was clearer, but that the, just from the perspective of somebody who might be looking to the county for prospective employment, I think that the career ladder aspect of this is important, just not only in terms of ongoing operations, but in terms of who we might be able to recruit. I personally think that's incredibly important, and we are aware that things like organization charts generally would help with that, but certainly an org chart won't undo, or won't compensate for the fact that the structure simply isn't there as it's currently organized. So, especially considering that the overall general fund contribution here for the adjustment of these five positions is so comparatively minor to the overall appropriations in the budget unit, and understanding that the work that they do feeds our tax revenue, I think, I, well, I do support this.
Thank you.
Are there any other Board comment?
Ms. Calaway?
The Board's been very hard on the assessor. I mean, this, last year, it's been nothing but beat up the assessor. And can't say that Leslie doesn't know how I feel. My comments to her are always no. But I think we lose sight of the fact that she is the department head. We might not agree always with how she might manage the department, or the fact that the roles aren't completed and so forth, or in a timely manner and so forth. But I feel that we need to separate that out. That's an issue that we would like this department head to deal with. That's separate from putting roadblocks in the way of the department, of the department head managing the department as they see. And we just did it with Krista. We said, it's your department. As Jack so eloquently said, you put down how you want to organize it, and you come back to us. I think we need to give that same courtesy to the assessor, and separate that out from what it is that we would like the assessor to focus on and do. So I support the recommendations that the assessors put forward. The last time she came through, we said no. And I just think it's time that we move on and start being supportive of what department heads want to do with the organization of their departments. We deal with the budget, and we shouldn't be getting into the weaves of how they want to. We just did it with Mr. Oliver. He wanted to combine code enforcement with the rest of his department. Will it make it easier for you? Will it help you? Yes. Okay, go ahead. Yeah? Krista, you want to do what you want to do? Go ahead. Assessor, you want to do what you want to do? No. I'm at the point of, we need to be supportive and deal with the issues that are important, that we feel are important to the county. And I think we've done that.
Supervisor Garimandi?
Very good, Marita. I'd love using my argument on you. Question, have we, we are changing these, these positions. Have we conferred and have an agreement with Labor on these? These are represented positions.
I defer to Ms. Hawkins. I believe there is one position. Ms. Hawkins?
So I am working with SEIU right now. We have had two meetings over the changes in the positions, and we are working through some questions in the job descriptions. One of the concerns that SEIU has is that we are essentially eliminating the cadastral GIS technician and taking those duties and adding it to the assessment analyst. And this is something that is not unusual for the GIS technician positions to be included in the assessment analyst. In fact, Calaveras County used to have the position of assessment analyst, and those duties lived within that position. And the purpose of this is only having one position that does the mapping creates a hardship for the department when this one position is taking vacation, out sick, or the position is vacant. Where if you have those duties within a classification where there is more than one employee, then that hardship is taken away, and the work is done more efficiently, faster, and then the work can be caught up faster. And so we are working through those clarifications with SEIU.
I, I think Marita's got a very good point, and I probably am just capable of getting out of my own way of the history of this. I'm not opposed to the number, budget. I would be very, I'm just not sure about all the positions at this point, but, you know, that's, we'll see where the Chair wants to go.
Are there any other Board comment? I lean more towards what Supervisor Garimandi is saying. I don't mind the dollar amount, I'm just concerned of what that organization chart looks like. Being new, and what I've heard over the last couple months is the complaint of not enough lower techs to do the job and catch up. And so my perspective is, it seems it's a little bit top-heavy, when we should be focusing on the lower manager, or the lower position. But then again, we are supposed to be allowing you guys to make those decisions as you see fit. I just don't want it to come back again, that we didn't provide enough people when we could be on one of those positions providing more boots on the ground, so to speak. So I just want to be conscientious of that, just based on no history, and what I've just heard and comments of going back and forth the last couple months on that. So, and I just don't want it to come back in another year, that some of these things have not been completed, and we've given, given the correct position. So I guess my next question is, will this, will this address the concerns that have been over the last couple months? Because if not, then what are we, what are we supporting?
I guess I look at it, two of the vacant appraiser positions are going to appraiser aid, trainee. So that's doing exactly what it is that you're recommending. And I think Ms. Davis knows what the priorities, what we see as the priorities. And if she thinks she needs this to do it, like the sheriff said, I need X number of deputies so I can get more into school, whatever. We didn't question that. We didn't question Krista, we didn't question code enforcement. But because we're not really getting from the assessor what it is we want, then we're, I guess I go backward, mixing up how it is she should manage her department, because we think if she does X, she's going to get it done. I think she knows what she has to do to get it done. And if we could be somewhat supportive of that, I mean, anyway, I said what I needed to say, sorry.
Oh, yeah, okay. Supervisor Toffenelli? No? Okay. I understand that argument. I guess another, being on the double side of it too, is being an elected official, how do you hold those, she reports to the people. So how do we hold accountability as well internally? And that's just a question, how, how does that work? How do we not end up in a couple years when this is the only accountability? And we had the phone call earlier this morning, that the union doesn't support it either, support these recommendations. So are we going to be in a situation where in negotiations, we've got some issues and we haven't vetted them as well? And I, I don't know. I'm asking, do we have that duty? Are you the person here? And I'm doing that based off of public comment earlier this morning, which, like, what, seven hours ago?
Yeah, I am, like I mentioned earlier, we are meeting and conferring over the job description of the analyst, and making sure that we can get on the same page regarding the cadastral technician job duties being in that job description. I think where SEIU is not, has some issues right now, is we don't have anybody in the department that can do the mapping duties. And so that's where we, we are running into some problems at the moment. But we are working through the job descriptions and everything, and I would not bring the positions back for reclassification until And I would not bring the positions back for reclassification until all of that was worked out with SEIU.
Okay, so then with that said, understanding where Ms. Cowalway's at, should we look at it as a global issue, just approve the monetary, wait till, I don't know how that works with recruitment, but then wait for this to be finalized before we do specific positions?
So in general, that's kind of always the case. It's a two-step process as it relates to amending the position control list typically when we do it at budget in any event. So the appropriations are what we're determining, or what you're determining today. And then we're taking direction in terms of what to bring back. As Ms. Hawkins explained, we wouldn't even bring back the assessor positions until the time that the, that the union is in agreement with whatever resolution they've come to. So what you would expect to see, and we intend to bring, will be the positions where we feel like we have clear direction and there is no other consideration regarding union agreement. Those positions will come back on the 22nd, along with the recommended budget for your board's approval. And then we would follow up to the extent that the assessor, for example, positions are worked through after that date, then we would bring it, whatever the next available meeting is, and you would have an opportunity, in either of those items, the board would have an opportunity to potentially change, change its direction.
Sorry. So just so I'm crystal clear, so what we're doing right now is we, if we approve this, we're approving the budget. We are not approving these changes or these positions, correct?
That would have to be done via the position control list and that will be done by a different, yes.
So we're not, so if we do this, when we bring back, finalize this on the 22nd, is that, is that when that would be approved finally?
Yes. Ms. Edwards, Ms. Hawkins, I did not just misspeak in any way, did I?
No, I agree. This is budgeting the funds and what I would call, I don't know, conceptual approval, but the actual action will, of changing those positions on the position control list will need to come at a subsequent meeting.
On the 22nd. So we're, so is there any way that we could approve the budget and then look at these positions a year later, months down the road, or is this all or nothing?
That would be subject to your board direction. It's certainly possible to do it that way.
Because like I said, I'm not opposed to the budget. I just don't understand what these all mean and I'd like to have the union consent on these changes before we do them. If I could separate the two, I would, but it's not really separating, bringing them back on the 22nd, in my book.
Just so I'm clear, we're only, are you only referring to the assessor positions at this point?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's, that's a direction for your board to consider?
And it's kind of a half-dead plan.
Only one supervisor.
Sorry?
It's only one supervisor.
Right, right, correct, yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, sorry, I misspoke. I didn't.
So where, do we want to pull before we vote and see whatever?
No, I'm still clear on my position. I feel like, oh, we're going to maybe budget for it now and then a year from now she doesn't do what we want and we cancel a position. We're impacting people's lives. I mean, we either say that she is the department head and she can organize her department as she seems appropriate, like we just told the CIO that she could do, like we just told the sheriff he could do, like we just told the building official that he could do. So if the issue is tasks are not being done that we feel should be done, then let's focus on what those tasks are, not focus on impacting somebody's life. I mean, Jack's point's appropriate and Judy addressed that, that they're negotiating with the union. I mean, we would want that done for the assessment analyst, if I understood correctly. So we're not talking about the appraiser aide or the trainees. So, or the GIS technician to assessment technician. So I move that we support these. Also, when we bring the, the reason I'm saying this now is that when we bring the position control list back, Ben's going to be in the room. And I don't think this is a conversation that we want to have with Ben in the room. I mean, then we start picking this apart for whatever reason we might have when he's in the room. So we either agree to it, I believe in concept, with the understanding that Judy makes it, works out the details with the union, but that would be true for any position in any department. So.
I'm not against the lower positions. I think I'm just a little bit concerned personally on the assistant assessor. And what the job description is. I think that's just, that's the only one that bothers me within the job description.
Which one?
That's it. Assistant, assistant assessor.
So that job description?
So I'm trying, I was trying to take a more global, but if we're going to have this discussion out, I think, for me, I have concerns about the position description on not, only on one. And I understand that she said, like, we've given all the other departments today, but I'm just concerned about it.
Oh, well, I'm concerned about the assistant CIO.
If I may, Ms. Hawkins, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that job description would come forward with the position control list and there would be an opportunity for the board to discuss or make amendments to it, should they wish to do so at that time?
Yes.
Again, is this a conversation that we want to have with, with Ben? I mean, it's going to be on a list of positions, oh, let's talk about everything but this. I mean, you know, is he going to jump back and forth and back and forth? I'm just, Ben, I said what I had to say.
So they're going to be back on the position controller?
I'm sorry?
It will come back with the position controller.
The job description, yes.
Well, then.
I, you know, I agree with Marita. I think if this is what's needed, we've had these discussions, we had a grand jury report, we've always had discussions, Jack, since you've been on this board and I've been back on this board, about how far behind we are there. If this is going to, what she says she needs to bring us back, then that the union and HR work out the job, what they're going to be called or what they're going to be doing. But if this is what's needed, then let's just do it. This time, let's just do it and see what happens. Obviously, there was some thought gone into this by the assessor and what Marita has a valid point, in my opinion. I'm willing to go forward with it and see when it comes back, the position control list.
Any other board comment? Okay. So do, is there a, do we need to make the motion before Ben comes back? Or what do you, what do you need from us before Ben comes back?
Yes, we could, forgive me, Supervisor Cowalway, if we could pull.
Supervisor Toffenauer, you said yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes. Four, three, one, oh, three, one, one, sorry. Is that right? Yeah, with one at the same, yeah. We'll take a break till he gets back. Oh, he's right here, never mind.
Thank, thank you, Susan. I'll move on to public comment. Okay?
Go ahead, make your public comment now.
Hi, hello again, this is Andrea Colavita-Pinkin from SEIU. I'm a little upset. I thought this item was going to be pulled from the agenda and that's the question that I was under. If I had known it was not going to be pulled from the agenda, my morning comments would have been a little bit different. If you can look back at my morning comments, I even alluded to the fact that it was unfortunate that these items were going to be pulled from the agenda. So I was under a very different impression about what was going to happen today with regard to these items. Now, folks had commented that other department heads got to set up their departments as they see fit. Other departments may not be acting illegally. There are suspicions that the assessor has broken the MOU and is acting in a fashion that is not consistent with the MOU. In that case, we have to dig deeper. Some of the things we have gotten back from our request for information is that they are operating under a contract that is 27 years old and that the terms and conditions of it have not been addressed in 27 years. Things like this lead us to ask more questions, that lead to more questions, that make us have to dig deeper and deeper. When you have a situation like that in a department, it can't just be trusted to do things and set things up the way they want to. So again, I think you can tell from my tone, I'm very upset. I thought this item was going to be pulled completely. I would have addressed the board differently this morning had I known that, if it wasn't. And no, this department is not like the sheriff's department or any other department in Calaveras County. And it cannot be trusted to be set up and do things and run things the way it wants to. And until we get to the bottom of things, we are going to be looking at this department with a fine-tooth comb. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment?
No, there are not.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion to approve everything we've deliberated on today.
I think we do that on the 22nd.
Well, I mean, to bring it back forward, yeah, never mind. So we're done for today? Or? I think we have to say.
Yeah, we need to close the public hearing if you just did. Can you enter like that, please?
Okay. There we go. There's the pro.
Okay, yeah. I just want to clarify here. I just want to make the right things. So here it is, a PowerPoint.
So this, right, so today's agenda item is to conduct the public hearing, receive the presentation, and provide the CIO with direction to any requested changes and then it will actually come back to be adopted at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. So do we have to approve the changes at this time to move forward or are we done?
It would just be any direction that the board is giving the CIO to bring back when it is adopted on the 22nd.
Thank you. Thank you. Is it clear, Ms. Bonnella?
Yes. My, my understanding.
Not, not, not the whole thing, but.
Right, and that we won't be making any changes to the actual budgeted amounts. We will be taking the board's direction as it relates to the other items and bringing it back then for final adoption, final with, for example, the adjustment to the district attorney's budget. Is that not consistent with your understanding?
That's, that's my understanding.
Hold on, I'm going to, hey.
Sarah, mute yourself. Supervisor announcement.
Okay.
In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. Supervisor Toffenauer?
I have a Mountain Valley EMS meeting on Thursday at 9:30 in Angel's Camp at the fire department building.
Which fire department building?
The one on Old Highway 4.
Madam Supervisor Cowalway?
Nothing to report.
I have nothing to report. Supervisor Guaramendi?
Mokel did dedicate the new restroom in the park with the veterans' district. It's been a long time coming, but now we have a place for our resident, for our visitors to go, which is actually a really big deal for us. Railroad Flat inaugurated their own little library in the old school site, so it's, as I mentioned before, it's leased out to BM CRC and they've got a library and six computers hooked up there and kids already in there, so it's great, good stuff going.
Excellent, Mr. Guaramendi. Ms. Bullendorf, nothing to report. With that, I'll adjourn, thank you.
And I'm never leaving you guys again for 30 minutes. Can't believe you guys got that far.